Call the order of the regular meeting of the Everett City Council today, March 26. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Marquezzi.
Here.
Counselor Metuski. Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
And President Napolitano.
Here.
Nine members present, Mr. President, you have a quorum.
I ask you all to rise and join us in saluting the flag.
Let the reasons to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask everybody to remain standing for a moment of silence. The city lost a few social people this week. Ron Donafrio, a member of our retirement board. Henry Rocco, the Rocco family, who's been serving this community for decades, also a former Navy veteran. I ask you for a few minutes' silence.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but we also lost the head of the maintenance at the school department, Lorna DeFeo.
Absolutely.
With heavy hearts, we also would like to give her a family to contribute to.
Absolutely, thank you. Before we start, I have a communication from Counselman Simonelli. He's away on some family business, and he will not be here this evening.
Motion to open public participation.
And also Counselor Metuski is also away on family business. All right, there was a motion? Could I hear the mo— I didn't hear the motion. I have a motion to open public participation, do I have a second? All in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it? Is there anyone on the sign-in sheet?
Counselor DeFlorio, not public participation.
Okay, is anybody here who'd like to speak during public participation? I'll ask one last time, is anyone here who'd like to speak on public participation? I have a motion to close public participation, do I have a second? All in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for item number two. I have a motion to take item number two, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Clerk will read item number two.
Item number two is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to call for an executive session meeting to discuss Exelon.
A motion that we move into executive session?
Should we name why we're going into executive session?
Exelon, and invite the—we have to invite the guests into the executive session.
This is specific language that I'm going to read on why we're going into executive session. This is to hold an executive session pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter 30A, subsection 21A.3, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the city's litigating position, as declared by the CHIA pursuant to GL, chapter 30A, subsection 21A.6, to discuss the value of real property if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the city's negotiating position, as declared by the CHIA, to tax increment financing agreement with Exelon.
Counselor Hanlon?
Just a motion that we announce that we will be meeting, rejoining here, re-meeting here after the executive session.
Once we have met in the back of the executive session, we will reconvene back out here and resort back to the regular order of business. So I have a motion to go into executive session, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We have to invite the guests.
Yes.
We have to invite the city solicitor, and Billy from the assessors office, all the representatives.
Members of the assessors office, city solicitor, and of course our legal representatives as well.
And also Kevin O'Donnell from the mayor's office.
And we would like to also point out, thank what we have in the audience.
Is our license lawyer here?
Yes.
Former Governor Bill Weld is in attendance. Thank you for coming this evening.
Did we mention our legal?
Yes.
And also Mr. Demus, CEO. I actually just did. We're going to be in executive session in the back room for a few minutes, we have a piece of business that involves some litigation that we cannot discuss in public. We will be back out in a few minutes.
City Council will reconvene.
Mr. President.
Councilman Capone.
I move that the clerk take custody of the minutes of the executive session and that the matter remains sealed until such time as the matter's been resolved.
Second the motion.
We have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The ayes have it.
This is an order. I would ask for a roll call. Even though you see one, I'd feel more comfortable with a roll call.
I make a motion that we take a roll call vote on.
You have a second?
Second.
Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marquezzi.
Yep.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays. You have so moved.
You have passed item number two. Clerk will read the... It was off the agenda. Anybody sign?
Yeah, actually, we're going to read... We'll do one first.
Item number one is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to appoint Joseph Gaff as sworn lawyer for the city of Everett for one year, term expiring March 2019.
Fable action.
Second. We have a motion for fable action swearing Joe Gaff as the city's city lawyer. Second. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays. Mr. President, you have passed the order.
Motion to take out item number five off the calendar.
Motion to take out item five off the count of the agenda. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read the item.
Item number five is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president reappointing eight special police officers to the Everett Auxiliary Police Department. Arthur Champa Dindia, Rashid Kalim, Mark Gehart, Guillermo Palencia, Ephraim Alicia, Stephen Chaffee, Thomas Sheffro, and Joseph Harold. These appointments shall be for an unpaid term of one year expiring March 23, 2018.
Counselor McGlaughlin. Second. We have a motion for fable action on the order. Second. Counselor McGlaughlin on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank these individuals for stepping forward and serving our community. They do a lot of great work for our community with very little thanks and no pay, and I know that we all on the City Council support their efforts wholeheartedly, and I know many of our members have worked years after, including yourself, on helping them get what they need, and we fully support their efforts going forward. I just want to thank them for their service.
Counselor Capone.
Mr. President, I'd just like to amend that to 2019. It's listed as 2018.
Okay, we have a motion to amend item number five to 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We vote for amend... Fable action as amended. And we have a second.
Second.
Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays. Mr. President, you have passed the order.
Yes, let's... If we could...
You got it.
Yes. I'm going to take a motion to take item number six, and we'll swear them all on together.
Yep. Please take item number six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number six.
Item number six is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to appoint the following special police officers to the Everett Auxiliary Police. Andrew Papa, Sunny Benjamin, Flint Davenport, Francisco Diaz Muniz, Yager DeSenzo, Stanley DuPlessis, Robert Fitzgerald, Jeffrey Gregorio, Andre Hankerson, Josh Willamontane, Thomas Mahoney, and Thaddeus Baxter.
Fable action.
In the official order here, it does say 2019. On the agenda, it does not, so I have it correct.
We have a motion for fable action. It's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays. Mr. President, you have passed the order.
Yes, let's... If we could...
You got it.
Yes. I'm going to take a motion to take item number six, and we'll swear them all on together.
Yep. Please take item number six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We vote for amend... Fable action as amended. And we have a second.
Second.
Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays. Mr. President, you have passed the order.
Yes, let's... If we could...
You got it.
Yes. I'm going to take a motion to take item number six, and we'll swear them all on together.
Yep. Please take item number six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number six.
Item number six is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to appoint the following special police officers to the Everett Auxiliary Police. Andrew Papa, Sunny Benjamin, Flint Davenport, Francisco Diaz Muniz, Yager DeSenzo, Stanley DuPlessis, Robert Fitzgerald, Jeffrey Gregorio, Andre Hankerson, Josh Willamontane, Thomas Mahoney, and Thaddeus Baxter.
Fable action.
In the official order here, it does say 2019. On the agenda, it does not, so I have it correct.
We have a motion for fable action. It's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays. Mr. President, you have passed the order.
Yes, let's... If we could...
You got it.
Yes. I'm going to take a motion to take item number six, and we'll swear them all on together.
Yep. Please take item number six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number six.
Item number six is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to appoint the following special police officers to the Everett Auxiliary Police. Andrew Papa, Sunny Benjamin, Flint Davenport, Francisco Diaz Muniz, Yager DeSenzo, Stanley DuPlessis, Robert Fitzgerald, Jeffrey Gregorio, Andre Hankerson, Josh Willamontane, Thomas Mahoney, and Thaddeus Baxter.
Fable action.
In the official order here, it does say 2019. On the agenda, it does not, so I have it correct.
We have a motion for fable action. It's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
You have passed the order.
Would you like me to...
Cheer for the new...
Seven and eight, then they're out. Then, uh...
Could we ask the members of both items, number five and six, to please come up to be sworn in?
I'm going to have you all raise your right hand. After I say aye, we're going to say your name, and if you have the name, we're going to do that three times, okay? Are we ready? Aye. Do solemnly swear that I'll faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as an Everett Auxiliary Police Officer according to the best of my abilities and understanding and grievably to the rule, regulation, laws, ordinances and charges of the city of Everett. So help me God. Aye. Do solemnly swear that I'll be in true faith and allegiance to the commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I'll support the laws and constitution of the Commonwealth. So help me God. Aye. Do solemnly swear that I'll be in true faith and allegiance to the United States of America, and I'll support the Constitution of the United States. So help me God. Congratulations.
We'll take a brief recess for pitchers, and then we will resume. I'm gonna have you all raise your right hand. After I say aye, we're gonna say your name, and we're gonna do that three times, okay? Are we ready? Aye. Do solemnly swear. That I'll faithfully and impartially. Discharge and perform. All the duties incumbent upon me. As an Everett Auxiliary Police Officer. According to the best of my abilities. Then understanding. Agreedably to the rule. Regulation. Laws. Ordinances and charter. Of the city of Everett. So help me God. Aye. Do solemnly swear. That I'll be a true faith and allegiance. To Conal Walter, Massachusetts. And I'll support the laws and constitution. Of the Commonwealth. So help me God. Aye. Do solemnly swear. That I'll be a true faith and allegiance. To the United States of America. And I'll support the Constitution of the United States. So help me God. Congratulations.
We'll take a brief recess for pitchers, and then we will resume.
Anna. We get you, but why is this signed in? Michael Cordina?
Okay.
Unless he's signed in on the committee. I bet you that's what he did.
Maybe.
He's not here.
Eighteen, then twenty.
He might have signed in on the night of the committee.
Mr. President, if you could just, if you could just notify the, the people that were gonna actually be doing the appointments, we have two more to do, and then.
Okay, we have two more items on the, on the agenda to, for appointments, then we'll take the waiting list.
Thank you.
Clerk's ready?
Motion for item number seven, please.
We have a motion to take item number seven. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Seven and eight collectively.
Item number eight as well.
Motion to take item number eight as well. Have a second? All in favor?
Thank you.
The ayes have it. Clerk will read items number seven and eight.
We, we can take them collectively, you're gonna vote for them separately.
We'll vote separate.
I'll read them at the same time. They are different terms. Item number seven is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to appointments to the council on aging for a two-year term expiring March 2020 for Rachel Dushino and Teresa Ayanako. Item number eight is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to appoint Ann Wisnowski, Brenda Howard, Hazel McNeil, Harriet Tamaro, and Josephine Navarro to the council on aging for a three-year term expiring March 2021.
A favorable action on the audits?
Second.
Fable action on item number seven.
Audits, seven and eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. They are different terms, and we do have to vote on them separately.
Absolutely.
But the one thing I do wanna say, and I wanna say it on behalf of the entire body, every one of these individuals that are listed here are quality people, do tremendous work down at the senior center. We're very lucky to have them, and I appreciate the appointment sent forth by the mayor.
Here.
So I second the, the motion to vote in.
Okay, clerk will start with item number seven for the two-year terms.
Item number seven. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePero. Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin. President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays. You have passed the order.
You have passed the order.
Fable action on item number eight.
Second the motion. Clerk will read item number eight.
Item number eight.
We'll read the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon. Counselor Marquezzi.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays. Mr. President.
You have passed item number eight.
Mr. President, can we make a motion to take item number twenty off the calendar, please?
No, actually, we have a sign-in order, and it's going to be item number eighteen.
We should make a spin of those, take item eighteen.
Have a motion to take item number eighteen. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number eighteen, please.
Item number eighteen, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor John Leo McKinnon that the newly hired clinician and program coordinator for the opioid task force that the city council administration had funded to help with the opioid problem come before the city council to update the council on their progress and new initiatives throughout the city at our first meeting in February. This was postponed a few times.
Counselor McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. President. Could we invite Ms. Tori Cyrus up, Mr. Paul Guarino, Mr. Supra, and the chief, Colley, if he's in the audience?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. If you please have a seat and state your name and occupation for the, for the audience. It's all right, no problem.
Steve Sapino, Executive Director of Health and Human Services.
Paul Guarino, PFS Coordinator, Partnership for Success.
Tori Cyrus, the social welfare worker for the Everett Fire Department.
Chief Anthony Colley, Everett Fire Department.
Counselor McKinnon. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to our guests. Just, let me see here. There was three pieces of information on this that are, should be on everyone's desks. It's a report, an overdose incident report for 2017, Partnership for Success update, and also from Tori Cyrus. There's a, a list of up to eleven that she had produced before us, so if we could have one of the panels start.
Absolutely. Yeah, what I'd like to do is just, if we could, just have these individuals tell you what they've been doing, keep you updated what's been going on. When we started this, we said we were gonna take a methodical approach. You know what I mean? We wanted to, you know, try not, try to limit our mistakes and become very, very good at what we're doing. Paul and Tori both been out in the trenches, you know, through the chief, really, really, really doing a heck of a job, so I'd like them to walk you through what they've been doing, and then if you guys have questions at the end, they should have most of your questions answered with what they present to you, okay?
Thank you.
So I've been in the position now since February 2017, so this is our first year of being able to compare the data that we've collected over the past year. We also put it on a map, which is behind you, to show which or where there's target spots for what's happening, and that helped us a lot, too, so that we can see if there's any type of hotspots in the, in the community that we can approach or do specific outreach for. We've also been doing overdose follow-ups with almost every individual that is overdosed in the city. If they are not from the city, we then contact the community at which they reside in. We've also compiled the incident report, which has a whole bunch of data. So we had 180 overdoses for all of 2017. We were averaging 15 overdoses per month. We are approaching the time where we're going to expect an incline of overdoses. We've had 15 total fatal overdoses, and to compare that to today, today we are, we have five fatal overdoses for 2018, so January 1st to today, we have five. We've also realized with the data that we compiled that we're using more Narcan at each incident, so every time we use Narcan for the fire service, it's declared as a 328. That's the way we can compare when we use our Narcan as a community, rather than like Cattaldo if there was a bystander Narcan. So that's the two different codes on that graph. The overdose incidents without Narcan were high as well. We also did gender differences, so we did compile the unknown as well as the male and female, the average age. The youngest was 19 years old, and the oldest was 78. Unfortunately, the 19-year-old was a fatal overdose that happened in Everett. And then we have the residency, and then on the, the final page is a list of all of the communities that we confirmed their residency of, and so we've contacted multiple communities regarding this issue, and we've also had feedback as well, so now we're being contacted of Everett residents that might be overdosing in the other communities, too, so that we can provide services for all-around and wraparound services for whatever the families or the individual needs. Dennis came on board, Dennis Doris. He is the recovery coach out of Parry in AmeriCorps. He's working with the police department, but Dennis and I go on our overdose follow-ups together. We offer services to the families. Dennis's job is to really keep up and follow up with the family after the initial meet, after the overdose. What we offer there is support services, harm reduction, Narcan training, and overdose prevention, and also Narcan if we have extra that, that we got from Parry from the grant. We've also placed Narcan in the fire department strictly for the fire department personnel because of the media with the fentanyl exposure to first responders. We have on each piece two boxes of Narcan just for our first responders in case we have an exposure there. We also are carrying an abundance of Narcan for incidents for the patients that we're responding to. We've also trained every nurse in the school system, and every school is now equipped with a four-milligram Narcan. It's in their first-floor AED. Every school in the community, every public school in Everett is equipped with Narcan. We've also worked with the, the health department, ISD, middle sex attorney, Marion Ryan, the police department in Roca. We've placed flyers in bathrooms, in public bathrooms, to make sure that we're aware of what we might be seeing, or if somebody's walked in the bathroom, what could be happening, and how to address it. We've also done mental health first aid for the fire department. We finished one group, so the, the purpose of mental health first aid is to respond with more background knowledge of what could be happening during a mental health crisis or an overdose, rather than going to the scene and not really knowing what's happening, and being more aware of certain signs and symptoms that we could be, that we could recognize to understand, and that we can be better at each call. We've also activated Project Care nine times within the city. We started that last March. Project Care is a program that is offered to families that with children who have experienced or been exposed to a drug overdose of a parent or a family member in the home. So after we activate Project Care, Elliot clinicians are allowed to contact the family within 48 hours to offer them trauma services for the children and the families. We're also now doing overdose follow-ups within 48 hours of the incident. Before, it was we were going weekly, and now with the accessibility of Dennis, we're able to go live and when we, quicker and more efficiently. We're also assisting families through 51As, which are mandated treatments. A lot of families don't know about 51As, but it's really our last solution, and a lot of families need, they can't get their individual that they love the help that they need, and we can go through the court. And so we've been walking through families through that. We've done four families so far, all with positive results. We've also expanded our services in the fire department by offering services to 51As that are filed for elderly and child abuse, so that we can contact the services that are offered for elderly abuse by Mystic Valley Elder Services, and we're now following up with those as well. And we're also in many different group initiatives, so we're with UASI, MOPSI, SAPSI, the Mystic Valley Public Health Coalition, the Elliot, and we work really closely with Cattaldo and EMS, so what the big thing was is that we were missing overdoses, but now Cattaldo has just released us a new app. It's called EMS Anywhere, and we have live feed of when Narcan's pushed in Everett from each, from each piece that's running around. So we have a daily feed of Narcan use, and we can now compare with the police, EMS, and fire to make sure that we're reaching everybody. Our biggest thing that we've accomplished is the roadmap to recovery that we started. It's the fourth Thursday of every month. It's five to seven at the Connolly Center. What we realize is that, yeah, we're reaching these families after they've experienced an overdose emergency, but how do we reach them before we can prevent that overdose from happening? So we decided to do a drop-in night, and the drop-in night consists of community resources, and it's open to Everett residents and non-Everett residents. We have resources such as Sober Shuttle, which allows to give rides to individuals to a detox or rehab. We've had one individual come to get help. We got him into a placement for a bed. He received a ride to the placement. We also gave him clothes and the necessary items that he needed, like toothbrush, toothpaste, soap, and all of the things that you wouldn't think of coming to get the place, and he was there that night. So we are seeing success. It's very small right now. We've also trained two families in Narcan and allowed them to have them in the home as well. And we're working really well together, I think, with the three different agencies, with Paul Guarino and the health department, Dennis Doris now, and the police, and us as, in the fire. I think as a team in a whole, we're meeting so much in making sure that we're not doing the same things over and over, rather than having a direct approach and a teamwork approach.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm Paul Guarino, like I said before, I'm the program coordinator for the Partnership for Success Grant, and it's a grant that, it's more deals with prevention, and what we're working with is more educational campaigns to the, reaching out to the high school students right now, and right now we're in the process of setting up a campaign. You know, our grant deals with, we saw some high numbers with the non-medical use of prescription drugs and over-the-counter drugs with high school students. You know, the numbers weren't that high, but it was just significant enough to get more education out there. So right now, we're partnering up with about 10 high school students. We have my own little youth action team, and they're gonna come out with a campaign or a slogan that's gonna be geared more to middle school students, eighth grade, and freshman, freshman class right now, because most of these kids that are coming in from the eighth grade, you know, going into a new high school, it's, there's a lot of stress out there, and different stresses that, you know, just wanna try to fit in, to be popular, and they're, these are the reasons, you know, youth, youth wanna start using drugs. And so this campaign's gonna be more of a pro, a pro-social campaign where, to make better choices, you know, and something we're working on a slogan right now, and we meet weekly at the high school, and hopefully by the late fall, this campaign will be introduced to the middle schools, and we'll be doing that through the, you know, the, the fairs, and, 'cause like I said, Everett High has, there's so many different groups these kids can get into, and when you get in, when you get into these different groups, it gets away from those temptations to do other things, so it's a, it's a lot of positive, positive things. And also, we work with a prescription take-back promotion, which is, we do that yearly. It's, it's throughout the year, but there's two main take, take-back days where we get the medications off the, out of the people's houses that are expired, or, you know, for safe disposal, and the next, the next day will come out, April 28th of this year. But also, we're trying to get into the senior center, a place where they can have a drop-off area, maybe weekly or bi-weekly, but I just got some news from Lieutenant Staubauer of the police department, that he's working with the DA's office to, they have some money, that they, hopefully they can get a, a drop-off box placed in the senior center, because you know, a lot of these drugs that, you know, the, the elderly or the seniors, they have grandchildren, and that's how people get started, going for medicate, medicine cabinets, and making some bad choices there. So to get these expired meds out of the houses into a safe place where they can, we can dispose of them. Also, we work, like I said, I work with the, the community with Tori and Dennis here, and being in recovery myself, I became a recovery coach last year, or the credentials through the, through the Everett funding, and I've been doing that for the last year. And what I do now, I volunteer right now to the Malden Drug Court, where I have two recover, I work on the two recoveries to help them navigate their recovery process, and to be, to see where they're at, and like I said, being in recovery, I can, I have that sense of feeling, how they, to appreciate them. Working with the roadmap to recovery initiative with Dennis and Tori, it's been a success, like Tori was mentioning, and it's only been a few months, but, you know, if you help one person, you've done your job, and, you know, so. Also, I work with Healthy Me, which is a community-based prevention, intervention project to prevent substance abuse, and we reach out to the high schools to engage students of Everett High School and to talk about substance misuse and other educational opportunities, about making healthy choices. We're involved with Parent University, which will be coming up April 7th at the high school, and it's a one-day conference out of the high school, which is for parents, families, educators, and community to help promote optimal health and well-being, and Tori and myself will be doing a workshop there for, for the families about the different roadmap to recovery initiatives going on in the city of Everett. And also, tomorrow, there's a, we'll be working with the, with the health department, there's a health for at the Connolly Center from 10:00 to 2:00, so we'll be having a table there. So like I said, anything I, we can do that I can, I can put my hands on, even though I'm, I'm grant-focused, but, you know, being in the, being in the field, you know, just to help one person, will make a difference, so that's all I got. Thank you.
Dennis, you got anything?
Dennis, you got anything?
How you doing? I'm Dennis Doris, a member of Parry AmeriCorps, serving as a recovery coach with the other police department. And I came on board in November of 2017, and my primary role is in the police department, serving to build up their capacity to deal with the opioid crisis. So I deal with them. I help break down some of the stigma in the department, I help deal with the Narcan issues there. I do outreach in the community, and I think the biggest thing when I came on board was how to identify who I was going to be working with, how I was going to get referrals, who I was going to be working with in the community. I worked with Chief Mays, he gave him some ideas of what some of the other departments and the other counties were doing, and so we started, he compiled a list with special investigative unit, some of the high-risk individuals that they've kind of dealt with over and over again. Also, the overdose follow-up, that was the biggest thing. So when I came on board, I think the biggest thing that I had to do was reach out and open the lines of communication between the fire department and the police department, working together on the overdose follow-ups, because it's really important to respond to these overdoses in a timely manner, and that really wasn't happening when I came on board. Sometimes they weren't responding like five, seven days, and that's just not ideal. So now we're going within 24 to 48 hours, and that's where we're seeing some of our best results. That's where we're getting most of our referrals, we're getting most of our people into treatment through these overdose follow-ups. Maybe not during the initial contact, that's usually not when they're ready, but we're able to give them our contact information, and sometimes, you know, a week, a couple weeks later, they either call back for themselves or maybe a family member. Everyone that's called us seeking treatment, we've been able to place. So that's, I think that's something that, you know, is very, you know, something we can hang out on, we've been able to get everybody into treatment. I think the biggest thing we've been able to do is work together and start that, like Tori said, that drop-in resource night, because that really opens everything up to the whole community, and it's a regular place people can check in, know where they're, and know the community's there for them. And it's just a good front, having the police and the fire together in this, this battle. And I just, I'm not, I just hope, you know, we continue to get the support of the city and council moving forward.
Tony.
Nothing. I can't say enough for what these three have done for the community. If you remember, a year ago, we were here just starting this whole process. We brought Tori on shortly after Paul, and then Dennis coming in. They work collectively. They're making a difference. We see a difference internally. I know Chief Mays, he feels the same way with opening up these, you know, these lines of communication. I know the public, we're seeing slight changes. We didn't think it was going to change overnight, but the resource night has been very successful, although it just started a couple of months ago. But we're seeing that we're actually able to help these people more than just administering Narcan on a, on a response, so. Again, I can't say enough for the three of them.
Money well spent.
Absolutely.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. President. Council McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I wanted to echo the comments that Chief Colley just stated. A year ago, we sat here, the, a year ago, there was none of this in place. Because of our leadership with the mayor, we've been able to put together an unbelievable team. Tori said a very small success. Saving one life is more than a success than we could have imagined, and we've already been able to do that, and you've impacted many lives across the city, Tori, and to all the members under Steve's leadership. I am, I, I got this report earlier today because of Mrs. McCoury emailing it to us, and I was able to read through this report. So a lot of my questions, I had an opportunity to talk with Mr. Sapino this afternoon about, so I won't echo the same questions, but I wanted to thank her. You guys are doing an unbelievable job. Just keep doing what you're doing. It's really making a difference, and one life saved is one life more than we could have expected or hoped for, and you guys are already doing the work that would need to be done. So I wanted to thank you, and could be prouder of our council as a whole for what we've been able to put together under the leadership of Leo and others that have all worked diligently, like Council DePiero on this. So thank you for all of you, not all, each and every one of you.
I have four additional speakers. I would ask that you keep your, your questions to our guests, and then hold your comments back till after we've excused them. Councilman Hanlon, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just received these reports today, and I really like to read statistics, I like to read charts and so forth, and something caught my eye right off the bat, and I need to ask you a question on that. And it's the first two charts, overdoses in 2017 and 2000, fatal overdoses in 2017. And I'm looking at June, which had 22 overdoses, and July, which had 14. And then I look at the overdose incident, the fatal ones, and it's zero and zero. And, and this is good, and I'm wondering if there was something that happened in that two-month period, September too had the same thing, but that two-month period, did we do something extra, or was it? Because that's the highest incident in June, was 22, 22, and you get zero deaths, and I'm wondering why that happened, and what was the incident, what happened that maybe that drove that to happen? Is there something, or was it just luck?
So if you turn the page, it says overdose incidents using Narcan. We'll notice that we used the most Narcan during those times, so that means we had more saves than, so we were there on time, basically, rather than being late. A lot of the times also, in the summer months, people aren't using alone, they're usually with the crowded in the public. So those are the times that we'll see public overdoses, and that increases saves versus deaths.
Well, it helps anyway.
Yeah.
It's great to see that stuff happening, you know?
Yeah, the fire department has been unreal, especially, you know, the guys on the line with reporting and showing compassion to these individuals. So the entire attitude towards this is changing throughout the fire service.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Council Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guests. Thank you very much for everything that you're doing, for heat our response, 100% placement for services, for families successfully through the 51A process. There, there's two things that I have a question on, and I think, Ms. Doris, you touched on one of them. You said, I think we're coming upon the months where you see an increase. Is that exactly what you just said? Warmer months, summer months? It becomes more of a group activity, or more than one individual not using on their own?
So we can't, I can't say like, oh, they're, they're using as a group, and that's why we're seeing more saves. But like statistically across the state, quarter four is always increased across the state.
Okay. And then the other thing that I wish, whoever wants to expand on it, if you could talk a little bit more about that roadmap to recovery, the drop-in night, for the benefit of the members here and for the members and people who may be watching at home, when that is? Is a certain, I think it was a certain night of the month and certain hours? What kind of services are available to folks?
So it's the fourth Thursday of every month, five to seven, at the Connolly Center. And what's available are many different types and ranges of services. So we have somebody that owns a sober home that's available there. We have somebody from Smart Recovery, which is a different type of recovery, rather than faith-based recovery that we see a lot. We also have recovery coaches that are there. We have mother support, family support groups that are there. Sober Shuttle, which is kind of an all-around, wraparound service. They, they offer rides to individuals from, you know, home to detox, detox to treatment, treatment back to home. They also offer any types of services, like clothes, donations, they can actually find people beds. We also have AIDS Action Committee that is present sometimes, which is a harm reduction and outreach strategy that is out of our pilot program. We also offer Narcan training, which is done by us because of the praxis training that we were offered. We also have Everett Overcome an Addiction, which is like the grassroots community in Everett, to have families become involved, involved with many different initiatives with the community that we're working with. I can't think of any other of those.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
So I think that's wonderful. How are you going about getting the word out to people? Family members, individuals? Is it, is it, well, you've got the individuals who you interact with, and then those family members, but are you doing it on ECTV, or is there anything like that happening?
So we post a flyer every month, because we're trying to get different events for each month. So the first month was just like a welcoming, and then February, we had Narcan training in the, this month that we just passed because of the snowstorm, we didn't get to, but it was like the recovery coach features, so we were inviting other recovery coaches around the state to come. But what we're doing is putting it on social media, and then as we're going to home visits, we're letting them know that that service is available.
And ECTV is always available as a resource, so please consider that, and thank you very much for everything you're doing. I know this is, this is a battle that's going to go on for a long time to come, and the results that you've had in the short run are tremendous. Thank you, and keep up the great work. I have no other questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Del Sol.
Again, thank you, what, what you're doing, and I know it's going to continue. A question I have is, you say you're going to go hit the middle schools soon. What, what's going on? Are we sending letters out to the parents before we talk to the students in the schools?
As of now, no. We haven't, right now, we're just reaching out with, we have a campaign in the process, like a slogan, so, once that does get put into place, hopefully by the late fall, we will be reaching out to the superintendent of the middle school, and hopefully we'll get, reach out to the parents too, because it's very important to get.
I just don't want them to be shocked when the kids come home and say they're talking about drugs.
It's just going to be a little, a positive, a positive phrase. Not, it's not going to be like, don't do drugs. It's more of a phrase where it's something like, how can you, how do you fit into this puzzle? With showing different activities that the high school has to offer, different clubs, different sports, different, there's 35 different, different clubs in the high school. So they can reach out and, and hopefully, instead of reaching, going to the wrong groups, they can, we can get these groups to the high school. So there's a lot of good resources for the high school to get involved in.
Okay. The other one question was, how's the turnout at the Amory when you have, every fourth Thursday, five to seven? I know we have the event, is there a turnout of people coming in looking for help, or?
Yeah, so we've had one individual come in looking for help, and that was the story about the young man who got the help they needed that night and was in a placement within, I would say, two hours. We've had families and other community partners come and network with each other, too, but we really have to grasp and get the community to actually come and see the services that are being offered. A lot of families are, I think, sometimes ashamed. I mean, the young man that came through was saying how his mother was like, please go, please go, please go, but the mother didn't come, and I think that's kind of the stigma that's wrapped around this type of thing. But yeah, we've had families come. I, I didn't have like the numbers or anything.
That's okay. It's great, what's going on tonight here in the meeting, people watching it, will come down to the next, next event that you have on the Amory. But thank you.
Council Mackey.
Excuse me, Mike, one, excuse me, one second. If I could just talk one more second.
Sure.
Just so you know, you know, going into the schools and stuff like that, we would absolutely do it, you know, the positive way. But we have, like I said earlier, we did this all in a methodical approach, that's what we're taking, one step at a time. You know, like building this program is unbelievable at the, at the Connolly Center, it'll be huge in a few months, because people feel more and more comfortable. But we're also, you know, other, other avenues we're going to hit, you know, you know, we're going to go to different places where the kids are, and we, we got to get to the kids. We know that. We got to help everybody, but we got to get to the kids.
Correct.
You know, so that's where, just, just to let you know, but I know that's concerning us, so that's why, we, we're going to go everywhere. You know, parks, recreation, everything, you know, we're going to go after everyone.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council Mackey.
Yes, Dennis, Paul, Tori, Chief Colley, and Mr. Sapino, you have a hard job ahead of you, and it looks like you're, you're addressing it and attacking, attacking it. Quick question. Since here, May 2017, there are six incidents that coded, and the average was 2.3 units of Narcan. What does a unit consist of? How many, is it milligrams? Four milligrams? So some of these people had to be hit, five, was it because there was something strong going around? Is that what happened?
Exactly.
So that's what this actually determines, if it's?
It's more potent.
More potent.
Right.
Okay, because the, the average, I guess, is like 1.5, which I'm sure is still potent.
Right.
Yeah.
We used to use two-milligram Narcans on all of our pieces.
I remember being here before, and I'm saying, where did this come from? I remember seeing, it was like four or two or something you had.
We've used as much as 16 milligrams on one individual to bring them back. It just depends, as, as you're administering Narcan, you also have to administer the Narcan, rescue breathe, wait three to five minutes, administer Narcan again, and you keep going until EMS arrives to be able to do it intravenously. But we're seeing really strong drugs that are people, that are people are using. We're also noticing that the drug of choice is now turning to fentanyl. It's not, you know, you'll ask somebody, what were you using? And they'll immediately respond, fentanyl. It's not heroin anymore.
And the second thing, I'm a little shocked to see the average age of overdoses. I thought I'd see 18, 19, 20, I mean, 45, 38, I mean, I didn't realize that it, it went that far up the scale, you know?
I think that's a huge misconception within the state. Like, everybody thinks that it's white, young males
Yep.
that are dying, but it's really white, black, Hispanic, Asian, male, female, young, old. It, it does not discriminate, and like, I think that's what was so great to see with these, with these numbers, is that there really isn't a pinpoint that we can go to and say, oh, we should really focus on this population. It's really everybody.
That's all. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
I mean, if I can do anything to help, but I'm sure the board feels the same way. We're always in your corner. Thank you.
Before I take second round of questions, any other, okay, Council DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, obviously, as everyone said, thank you so much for all the hard work you guys are doing. I just have a quick question. We see on the news all the time, people overdosing just simply from exposure to fentanyl, not using it. Has that happened in the city at all? Have we experienced that?
That has not happened in Everett yet.
Okay.
The big thing that's happening in Everett is the cocaine usage, in that people are thinking that it's okay to use cocaine versus fentanyl because it's not an opioid, but it's being cut with fentanyl. So you, people aren't really understanding what they're buying, and the dealers don't really understand what they're selling either.
Exactly.
But, no, we haven't had any secondhand exposure in Everett.
Thank you.
Council Hanlon.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Will anybody, any of yours will be going to the summit in Atlanta, Georgia, in April 2, 3, 4, 5?
Oh, group.
I have a favor to ask of you. I know in most places, they have vendors that put out displays and so forth. They usually have a pamphlet. Would you make a collection of those pamphlets and bring it to us? And also, if there's a way that we can find out, because sometimes if we ask, they'll send us a couple of hundred of them, or maybe even more, I would appreciate that very much. Because we have a, we have a chairman on our committee, we got an opioid, and I know he loves to pass those things out, that, that's Councilman McKenna.
All $45,000 of them.
Yeah, I know, he's done so many, but I would, that would be really nice if we could get some, you know, especially the new things that are coming out. We would appreciate that very much.
They're still up there.
And also, thank you all for everything you guys are doing. Thank you.
Council McKenna.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Okay, if there's no other, no further questions, I'll take in a motion to, excuse customary thanks.
I just wanted to say.
If I, if I could, though, I do have a speaker who wanted to speak prior.
Oh, I'll, I'll yield until, actually, I want to, I want to address them while they're here.
Please.
Go ahead. I'll yield to her.
No, no, she wanted to speak after they were excused, so.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Nah, it's my piece.
All right. Councilman DeFiorio, because you have not spoken yet, please.
I actually want to thank the gentleman and everybody that's here for the great work that you've done. I also like to thank Council McKenna for being the head of the opioid committee and getting this going, and also Council DePiero for bringing it to light. But Council McKenna actually did a lot, a lot of work, and he deserves the recognition more than all of us. But thank you very much, and also the mayor, because without money, we wouldn't go anywhere. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Someone should give Counsel McKinnon a shalali.
Yeah. I'll, I'll bring the shalali around for everybody to handle.
Counsel McKinnon. I think that night, I, Mr. President, I think that night I had to actually say thank you to everybody in the room anyway, so, you know what, it was a great night. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone involved here. It was great, you know, getting you guys in place. I want to thank our colleagues here, because without the colleagues voting on it, the mayor, you know, accepting them votes and actually saying, "We need to do something," we wouldn't have the funding to actually have you all sitting here tonight. So, I just want to thank you, continue doing the great work. Steve, if we can, I, I just want to, Mr. Supino, I would like a monthly report back from you guys. So, whoever would like to do it, if you could designate someone or yourself, that would be great. Just so that we have an update on what yous are doing, and, you know, the drop-in centers stuff, if we can, you know, get invited to, you know, different programs that we're doing, we may all show up at that and say, "Hey, we're here to support. What do you need us to do?" All right? But thank you very much. Yous are doing a great job and continue the work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor. Counselor, your pleasure.
I'd like to refer this back to sponsor with just them reporting back to us. That would be great.
Counsel.
In writing.
And just on that, I just want to thank one more, one more group that we didn't, that we have in the past, Patty Anscole, you see, and Everett Becoming Addiction, for keeping this item in the public eye long enough that the city could get involved and do everything and make the kind of progress we have. So, collectively, everybody, thank you. It's just wonderful.
Okay, we have a motion for, to refer back to sponsor. I need a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Can we suspend?
Take item number 20.
Take, I'm 20.
20's on that. That's him.
All right, make a motion to suspend the rules.
We already did.
Oh, bring number 20.
Yep. We have the senator before us, please.
Need a mo, I need a second. Can a motion to take on number 20? Stand rules, take on number 20. A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Item number 20. Mr. President, there's a resolution offered by Counselor Michael McLaughlin and Counselor Richard Del Sol to invite Senator Saldi Domenico to discuss earmarks the senator has got for approval for the city of Everett.
Make a motion to invite the senator?
Second. Got a motion, but sir, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. President and all the members of the council, thank you for inviting me up here. So, I'm assuming you wanted me to talk about earmarks, what I've gotten in the state budget last year, what we're doing this year. So, we have, this year was a tough budget year for the state. We passed a budget last July, and we went through a lot of months unsure if our earmarks are going to come through or not. And the governor held up the funding until he was satisfied that we were able to fund all the initiatives that we put forward in our budget. So, as of January, mid-January, he came back to legislature, and he said that all of our earmarks that were coming to our cities and towns were now approved to be distributed, and that is, that process happened across the state, including the city of Everett. So, in this, this year's budget, which is going to end this fiscal year on June 30th, this money that I'm telling you right here has to be spent by then. And if it does not, if it's not spent, then we lose it. So, the mayor's aware of this, and his team is aware of this, and they have already put in motion all these things that I'm going to talk to you about. So, the first one, and this is coming from the mayor's office, that this initiative here, when the budget was put forward, we contact our cities and towns, the chief executive in each community, and ask them for suggestions and some things that they want to put in the budget. And the mayor came to us, and he wanted $50,000 for an ADA compliance swing set for Glendale Park, which that has been funded. Talking to Kevin and Tony Souza, that is in the, in the process of being put out to bid, and that work is going to be done soon. $70,000 for the Kavarian School taught lot for the new flooring. We all know the wood chips are on that, in that lot. That's dangerous for children. I'm down at that school a lot after school, and the kids are in there playing, and we're going to put rubber flooring in that lot. $75,000 to increase access to office-based opioid treatment services in Everett through the CHA Alliance. So, that money has, has been given to them to add an extra support person for the opioid addiction issues that come up in our city. And this one was, was something that John Haaland and I spoke about. We're going to have to redistribute these funds and find a way to spend them appropriately. But we got $100,000 for the 120th anniversary celebration for Everett. That happened last year. You're doing that right now. All right, well, Sergio's on top of that. So, that money was, was given to the city to help with the celebration of our anniversary. So, we were hoping that was going to be spent last calendar year, but Sergio's on top of that, so we're going to be, the crook's on top of that. So, we'll be spending that this year in an appropriate way to celebrate our anniversary. And $75,000 for youth caseworker to combat youth violence in the city of Everett, that is being worked out with the school department and ROKA, which is a community-based organization that is in Chelsea, Baltimore, New York City, Chicago, across the country. They're, they're well-known for their work in our communities, identifying issues in our schools and our community, and making sure that they address them in a way that brings down any kind of violence, opportunities for violence in the future for our city. So, those are the earmarks that, that were just for Everett only. But obviously, Chapter 70 funding for our schools was increased the last fiscal year, and also Chapter 90 money, which is for our roads and bridges, that has also increased, and Everett was seeing an increase in that funding as well. And our local aid increased as well over last year's number. So, the school number increased about $1.5 million over last year, and our local aid about $275,000 over last year, last fiscal year. So, nothing has gone down, but everything has gone up, but not at a level where we hoped. So, that is the issue that we always talk about with the schools. We need more money coming into our city. Nothing has been cut, but unfortunately, based off the new formula that has been presented to us, we have not gotten our fair share, I believe, for school funding. So, addressing that has been a priority of this council. I know the mayor, the school committee superintendent, you've been working on this, and we've all heard about it, you know, many, many months, but there is some work being done in that area. So, we're hoping that we have some resolution coming forward very soon. I know that the president of the council has put together, or is going to put together representatives of a committee to potentially meet with folks at the State House. The school committee is doing the same, and we are hoping to get a meeting very shortly with the upper echelon of the governance administration, potentially even, hopefully him, to sit down and talk about this issue and get to the root of the problem, because we're getting conflicting messages from a lot of different places. The state is saying they're holding communities harmless. We know that's not, not true, and we have to just sit in a room, work this out, and come to a resolution that's satisfactory to the community, because we are missing a lot of, a lot of funds with this new formula. This new formula has hurt a very small number of communities across our state, and because it's only hurt a small amount of communities across the state, it's not this critical mass of uproar at the State House, because other communities have benefited from this formula. And because of that, you're not going to find a lot of my colleagues that are willing to change it back to the old way, because they benefited by the new way. And so, we are at a disadvantage. The fact that we only have a small number of communities that are affected means a small number of legislators advocating for a change. So, that is where we are with the school funding, but that could be addressed very shortly. That, our, our goal and our plan is to have that in place by this coming budget, because the Senate budget comes out in May. The governance budget has already come out. The old formula was used in the, in the governance budget, but the House and the Senate can't adjust that along the way. And it's my plan to adjust it on our side. I know Representative McGonigal as well on the House side, but we have to have the facts in our hands after this meeting, and hopefully that will happen very soon.
Okay. Counselor DeFiorio, you have any questions for the senator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, through Senator Domenico. There's been approximately, how many communities affected by this problem?
About 15.
Okay. So, and I've been saying for the, since this formula came out, that there's no way they're going to change the formula. It, it doesn't affect, unfortunately, everybody. So, 80% is a fact, you're not going to get the votes up there to change the formula. So, my thing is, why can't we go speak with the governor, is putting the committee together, and try for a supplementary budget? Explain to them what the problem is. Right. So, so is, that's the plan that we want to do, and do you feel that that's the way it should go around? I just want you to say, there's no way, you already said it, there's no way they're going to change this formula. Is that correct?
So, yes, that is true. So, I have a suggestion.
Okay.
That I'm going to be giving to the governor, and he knows my suggestion. So, changing it and tweaking it are two different things.
Right.
So, changing it is not going to happen.
Right.
But if we can add a, so, the problem we have is Everett has done a very, very good job of collecting the free and reduced lunch forms. That has been the measurement for low-income students in our community. Other communities have not done as good of a job as Everett has, collecting those forms. We offer, as a parent, I fill one out myself every year. I'm not eligible, but I fill one out every year. So, they are tenacious about getting every single form back. That is the true number of low-income kids in our community. Other communities have not done a great job of this, so people have petitioned the state to change the formula, so that is no longer in use. That form is no longer a criteria. The criteria is now public benefits, SNAP benefits, you know, low-income benefits, mass health, certain, certain number of mass health programs, not all mass health programs. And that is used, because now they feel that because these kids are in a public assistance program, that there's a need for those families. The problem is, our population doesn't always apply for those programs. They don't know about these programs. So, even though they are qualified to receive them, they don't take advantage of them because they don't know how to access them. And as a result, we have a large number of students that are not being counted. My suggestion is pretty simple. Add the free and reduced lunch form as another criteria, so you can use any of the criteria in front of you, including free and reduced lunch forms. So, there is no change in the formula, there's just adding this one piece to the formula, which will solve Everett's problem and all 16 or 15 other communities' problems as well. So, that is where we have to convince the administration to add that one piece, and we will be fine. To add that one piece means that the pool of money does not increase, so other communities that are receiving an additional amount of money have to lose some of that money, because the pot stays the same.
Right.
There's no additional funding going with that change or that tweak in formula. So, because of that one change means that, I'm not going to name towns, but towns that don't really need assistance for their schools will get a little less, which they won't be happy about. But the towns and cities that need the assistance will see where we have to be. So, it's a true number now, as opposed to just this number that benefits a few, benefits most communities, but they have not done a good job of doing what we've done, and Chelsea has done, and Medfit, and Walden, and some will have done with their free and reduced lunch forms. It's a simple fix, but it does affect a lot of communities.
Now, this, this formula was put into effect, what, three years? Was it three?
Three years ago, yes. And, and when we saw it, we knew right away that it wasn't going to work for us. So, the first year, I was able to get a pothole account, which means, you know, a part of money that is used as mitigation for our communities like ours, where we're able to, to draw off of that amount of money and not lose the resources that we have. The problem is, you can't, you can't fix this problem with a pothole account every year. It has to be some structural fix. If we go by pothole accounts every year, we're not going to have enough money going forward, because there's never going to be enough in that account to satisfy all the needs of all these communities. So, we've been able to do a stopgap for a small amount of time, but it has to be, has to be a long-term fix here, and that suggestion would fix it.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Senator.
Counselor McKinnon, question for the senator?
Yeah, through you.
Through you, Mr. President, to the senator. Has there been any appropriations to any cities and towns that were affected by this, Senator?
The pothole account. So, the mitigation fund was that pothole account that, that I was able to get money into.
Was there any other cities besides this city?
Oh, yes, yeah. So.
Neighboring cities to what?
Neighboring cities have gotten it. The level of advocacy depends on how much money they've gotten.
There's one in particular.
I'm advocating for my district.
Absolutely.
So, Everett and Chelsea are the two communities that I have been pushing hard for, and they have done okay.
Okay.
In comparison to other communities.
So, the other communities that, that received an appropriation?
They received an additional amount of money from the pothole account.
How much was that, do you know?
Yeah, under $1 million.
Under?
So, yes.
Okay.
You know, they've, you know, we've been able to receive over $1 million.
And will they continue to get these appropriations?
In this year's budget, the pothole account does not exist.
Okay. So, they're going to have to do something.
So, if we don't put it in the Senate, or the Houses will put it in, as, as, you know, together, then if we don't fix the formula or tweak the formula and have no pothole account, then there's going to be another issue come, come July.
So, we're looking for a long-term goal?
I'm looking for a fix, and it's a very simple fix. If we can all come, you know, be reasonable people and, and understand that this issue that benefits these communities is not fair. It's not fair. It's not, not a fair formula.
Yeah.
And.
I agree.
And we have to keep pushing every budget year to fix this problem or find a mitigation, you know, line item to put more money in to offset some of these issues, but it's never going to be enough.
With, with.
Because we should be receiving millions of dollars more for our schools.
Absolutely, yeah. We should be. But with that being said, if, if in fact we can get this to be, you know, to fruition, the piece that you're looking to do, that should be a long-term goal fix, I would think.
That will be the fix.
Okay.
If we can, if we can convince.
Not everybody's going to like it.
No, because the, the way, the way, you know, status quo now is these other communities are going to receive an additional amount of money. So, again, the pot, the pot does not, not increase.
Yeah.
So, Chapter 70 money is not going to increase, they're just going to be reallocation of funds, and some will benefit.
And will.
Which, which rightfully so.
Will gain from that.
Rightfully so, we will gain.
Okay.
And because our numbers are true numbers. If we're, if we're really going to be fair in the state about funding education.
There should be true facts in it.
It should be true numbers.
Absolutely.
We shouldn't be going by, you know, groups of people that are being left off, because people are making decisions that, that are affecting real issues in our community. And if we don't fix this problem, this is not going to go away.
No.
This is a year after year, continually coming before the city council and the school committee, there'll be issues here. So, we have to make sure that, you know, with your help, because we need advocacy at your level as well, to show them firsthand, this is, this is an issue. This is not just, you know, you know, a rounding error on, on a piece of paper, which is what some people are calling it, the State House. So, this is, this is a real number.
Because they're gaining, we're losing, that's why.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and, and, and to be fair, no one wants to hurt these communities, obviously. Nobody wants to, not to see, you know, people not getting their fair share. But we have to prove to them, which we have time and time again, but now we have to get a critical mass of support at the state house to do that. So that simple fix of adding that one extra criteria will fit the bill. But again...
We just need to get there. I know the, the president, then, I know the president's been working on this for how many months? Two months? About two months now, so...
Yeah, he's been in communication.
There'll be, there'll be some type of board, I would say, that's gonna be going up there shortly to, you know, communicate our, our, our problem and our issue with the rest of everyone else that needs to hear this because it's a vital problem that's going on in our city right now. And just by testimony and, 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 you know, people coming up before us requesting funds and stuff like that, you know how it's going to impact us.
Yeah, no, every dollar means something to this community, so...
It, it's, it's, it's gonna, class sizes, education, teachers, there's gonna be a lot of impact here if we don't do something, so this is gonna be important, and I'm glad that the president actually is working on it.
Yeah, I'm working with President Napolitano and Lady Maria, Superintendent Farrar.
Yourself, you, Representative McGonigal.
McGonigal, so...
I mean, there's a number of people that have been doing this.
We all know there's an issue here, we all understand there's an issue, and, and there is a way to fix it.
Oh.
It's, it's not, you know, we don't have to recreate the wheel here.
No, maybe they just need to hear from other individuals that are getting impacted by it.
We need some backup up to, up to the state house.
Yeah.
Because right now, you know, we've been working on this for three years, trying to kind of come to resolution, and that, we know how to fix it. It's just a matter of will we be able to, you know, influence the right people to change that. In the senate, the senate budget, we are going to do something big in the senate budget, but we're one of three branches.
Sure.
So...
We need to get to the other two.
Yeah, you know, I'm always a means still, even though, I'm a system jolly, but I'm also still a ways of means. And, and I still have a voice there, and, and, you know, our cheerwoman Karen Spoker has been very, very supportive of public schools and supportive of our community here in Everett. And, you know, we, we know how to fix this, it's just a matter of, you know, the problem we have is, we can do all we can in one, in our budget, that's one. We have to go to conference committee and work with the house, governor has to sign it, there, there are three parts to all of this, not just one.
Sure. It's like doing a piece of legislation. Exactly.
Doing a piece of legislation, but this, this is implications of millions of dollars.
I, I think this is gonna be an integral, this will be an integral part of it, though. I think us going up there and saying, hey, this is what we need, that'll be the, the thing, so...
Right.
All right, thank you. Council McLaughlin, question for the senator?
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm really excited to hear the line items that the senator went over this evening, so roughly around two million dollars that the senator delivered to our community last year in earmarks, which is really a success story. So I want to thank him for laying out his plan for last year. I just have a couple of quick questions. One is, I don't know if he's thought about earmarks for this year, or if he's had a discussion with the administration about earmarks for this coming year, but I know that he, as he said, the senate budget comes out of, out in May, so we're right around the corner from that time. I don't know if he can highlight any of those, if he's not prepared tonight, that's okay. I was just wondering, being so close, I'm sure the conversations have occurred. I don't know if you're prepared to answer any of those tonight?
I am, I am. So the process for the budget has started in January, and each member meets with chair of the means and puts, you know, together their priorities, and not just earmarks, but also priorities when it comes to education funding and mental health services and, you know, the gamut of all different things that we work on in the state budget. So I have, obviously, priorities that I have put forward, including, you know, education is a big issue that I've been working on, so that's, that's the major issue right now we're working on in the city. But I also have put together some earmarks for next year, and similar to this year, to keep that staff person at CHA, the opioid addiction issues, I don't want that to be a one-year fix, so that is gonna continue next year as well. The mayor wanted seventy-five thousand dollars for waterfront access improvement plan in the city of Everett, which we are, we're gonna be getting for him. We're doing fifty thousand dollars for new technology in every public schools, seventy-five thousand dollars for music programming in the every public schools. We're doing additional funding for playground enhancements throughout the city. And then we're getting seven hundred, well, seven hundred thousand split between three communities, Everett, Boston, and Cambridge for hazmat training.
Seven hundred thousand?
Seven hundred thousand, that's split between, split between, you know, three communities, so you're not gonna get all seven hundred thousand dollars for Everett. But, um, but that, that, that will be about, yeah, about a third of that. And that is for training for hazmat issues with LNG, you know, being in our backyard and different things, we have to be prepared for that. That is actually in every budget that we've, that I've been a part of since I became a senator, but that is gonna be earmark just for Everett only.
Thank you, Senator. I appreciate those earmarks, and again, delivering funding for our community is, is one of the top priorities, and you are always there for us. I just have two quick last questions for you, and then this is, to finish this up. In the years to come, we will see additional payments from wind resorts to our community as the development opens up. Do you feel that that will impact funding sources from the state, our ability to be able to pay more as we see not only the wind mitigation fund come to fruition as the first year that they open, which will be the budget after this one, but surrounding projects that may come forward? Do you foresee that happening? Have you heard about that, or what is the plan?
Are you talking about local aid and, and school funding?
Yes, exactly, chapter seventy and chapter ninety.
Okay, okay.
Or any funding? I don't know if there's other sources that that might impact, or other line items that that might impact?
Yeah, so the, the state formula is built upon the premise of your ability to pay. So if a community's ability to pay goes up, then funding will not increase as much as it has over the years. So it will not go down, but you will not get the increase that you have always gotten historically. So with the payments that are coming from wind, you know, the thirty million dollar payments coming in year after year, that will be taken into account by department revenue. And that will be taken into account when the formula is, is calculated. We, you know, we're never gonna go down, but the increases might not be as much as we have in the past.
It's good to know that they won't decrease based on formula change in our community, but the contribution from the state may not be as significant as we've seen in years past, whether it's pothole accounts or other funding sources.
Yeah.
But as long as we can kind of stabilize, I guess, if you will, and then figure out from there, I guess is the best option. And the last thing that I, I wanted to touch on is, I have a piece before us this evening regarding the Boston Globe article that came out last Sunday, I believe it was, talked about surrounding communities, not surrounding communities, other communities in the state that are looking at a lawsuit for, against the state of Massachusetts and so forth, the governor, I guess. As you said, the formula isn't going to change on its own, probably not going to change at all. Does the governor take that lawsuit, in your opinion, as one of the more stronger stands? If, I believe there's sixteen communities in the gateway communities that are affected by this formula change, somewhere around sixteen communities. If, say, all sixteen of them were to join efforts in this one lawsuit going forward, would that be a significant step for the governor to, to take what we have to say more serious? Because at that point, we're putting our influence or weight or whatever you wanna call it behind this lawsuit, not just as at Everett, but in all sixteen surrounding communities. I know if there's only a few, it's not gonna go very far. Your thoughts on that? Because I have a piece on tonight regarding the, uh...
Oh, you do?
The lawsuit. I do, I don't know if you heard about that.
So, so, I can't speak for the governor, and, and I will, I don't pretend to know what he's thinking and know how he would be affected by one, two, fifteen communities going on a lawsuit. I, I don't know how he would react to that. What I do know is that if we are trying to work this out the way we're trying to work this out, if we do join the lawsuit, which is, is our right to do, and I wouldn't say don't do it, I wouldn't say do it, because I am not gonna be responsible for something that doesn't happen or does happen down the road, this community, but I can tell you that we are trying to work this out this way for our community, in terms of getting together with the stakeholders at the state house that make a decision on these things every single day. If we can convince them to do this, and again, I'm not looking to change the formula, looking to enhance the formula, that's the word, enhance the formula, that change could fix this problem. If we add an item to a lawsuit, does that change the tone of our conversation going forward? I don't know. But I can tell you that, that has to be taken into account as well.
No, and I, and I respectfully agree with your opinion on that. My only thought on it is, if the governor per se isn't going to come to the table and his upper entourage of staff is going to come to talk to the city of Everett, the governor is going to, the governor specifically is going to hear the lawsuits stronger than hearsay from his, his administration, if you will.
Councilman, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that, only because you have that as a separate agenda item...
I just want, yep, I appreciate it, absolutely.
That you, any further discussion on that until we get to that item?
No, that's fine, I just, I decided I won't be here for that item, and that's why I wanted to ask him his opinion, uh, before that.
I can't say that quickly.
Please.
The governor has not said he will not meet with us. So I don't wanna make that, that assumption to this community that the governor will not sit down and talk with us. He has not said no. He has said to me personally that he wants to sit down and work this out. So I take him for his word. He has not said anything different to me where he has done something and said something and not do it. So he is going to give us an opportunity to plead our case. He is gonna give us an opportunity to sit in front of the people that make the decisions to plead our case. And I think we have a compelling argument to make. And I think once they hear it from us, in this community, the mayor, the president, the superintendent, the councils and school committee members who are on that committee, on that group, that will be a compelling reason to speak with us. And I, and I really believe that they wanna make this work. So I'm not naive to believe that a lawsuit doesn't carry some weight and doesn't move people a little differently than a private conversation that's no longer private since I've told the world now on TV. But it is something that, that I think we should explore in terms of this conversation with the stakeholders at the state house, and, and not rush to do something that does not be rushed into at this moment. So that's my two cents on that. But I, I would say, let's try it this course. And I know the super prominent might think differently, I haven't talked to them about it, I don't know what their feeling is about this. They do know that we're trying to get a meeting with the people at the state house that make, that, that could make this change.
Thank you, Senator. I want to thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for always delivering for our community. We appreciate all you do, and the beacon of hell every day for the residents of our community as a whole. You're a great fighter for us. Thank you.
Thanks.
Council Marquesi, questions for the senator?
Uh, yes, to address the senator through the chair, I'll make it nice, quick. I'm sure the fifteen to sixteen that communities that are affected are all the Evarts, the Revers, the Chelsea. And on top of that, those are probably the, the poorer communities that probably spend most of their money in the lottery, which I'm sure if you add those fifteen to sixteen communities, probably have fifty to sixty percent of the total lottery in the state. Why couldn't some, I mean, I know the lottery, the lottery addresses are chapter seventy and chapter ninety money, right? Somehow?
Yeah.
Oh, it's, it's just giving a blanket to us and we can use the money whatever we want, I believe?
It's going, it's a local aid, yeah.
Going to local aid?
Yeah.
Why can't that formula be changed? You know, that's, I don't understand, you know, we probably spent thirty million dollars a year on the city of Everett, we really get chump change back on it.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's, it seems like there's a revenue source there that we could address, you know, without, you know, affecting anybody else, you know, so...
So that has been proposed in the past, but it will affect everybody else because the pool of money will stay the same. So if you reallocate the formula, other communities will receive less local aid from that, from that part of money. So a, again, it's, it's a small group of communities that would benefit from that change, which, you know, because it, it, communities that, you know, I don't wanna again, name names, but we know the communities that, that, that don't spend money on the lottery. And they do get some money back from the lottery.
Substantial amount compared to the amount that they actually spend.
As a percentage, as a percentage, yes. It's a higher, much higher percentage than we receive.
It's just a shame that they couldn't come and benefit the, the cities that really deem it.
Yeah, so there, there has been a lot of talk over the years of reallocating that formula, and, again, because it only affects a small number of communities in a positive way, that there's no, there's no way, it hasn't got any, any momentum on that, on that. But that, that, that's something that I've been, been looking at...
It's an awful lot of money there.
Since two thousand and ten. There's a lot of money in that, in that, in that account that if we reallocated it a different way, and it went based on where the money was spent as opposed to where the money was not spent, but then you get, people have argued that you could have people who are living in Malden buying tickets in Everett, which, which, that's semantics, but, but, but that, that's...
I really don't get my car and drive to Malden to buy tickets.
I agree.
So you buy one at every ten feet in the city of Everett.
Yeah, I'm not ashamed to say I buy my own tickets and, and I do buy tickets in Everett, so somebody has to win.
So I'm not gonna hold you up. Thank you very much.
Council Capone, questions for the senator?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the senator, first of all, thank you for your patience. It's been a long night.
Yeah, it's fine.
I know you've got a lot to do, and we appreciate you being here. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think this might be the first time at a first, at a formal session of the council since your elevation to your new position.
Yes.
I want to publicly congratulate you all, and that is a testament to your hard work at the senate, and as members of your district, we're the beneficiaries of that. So thank you for everything done, well earned. The question I have for you is, is you had mentioned backup from the council. I know we have a delegation going forward, hopefully, to meet with the executive branch. We've got, we've got you working in the senate, we've got Rep. McGonigal on the house. Is there anything else that we, as a city council, as a community, can do to help get some additional info up to the state house?
We have to get the meeting scheduled first, and then, then we would need, we need as much information as we can from the community, and the impact on the community. You know, we can talk all day about numbers, but we need to know, we need to show them their impact, their personal stories, and the things that we, we are going without because of the, the lack of funding, although, actually, lack of funding, not as much funding as we should be getting.
Sure.
Yeah, we, we never go down, you know, so that, that, that's, that's the issue I want to make clear, too. We never go down on funding.
Right.
We just never, we don't, we have not gotten to the amount that we should be getting.
Right, and, and our needs increase every year.
Our needs and our fixed costs go up, and, and proportionally, we're not getting that increase in, in the formula. So, you know, we're not getting, I hear sometimes people say, state is being cut. We're not cutting the funding, but we're not being fair to our students in our city as well by not getting the appropriate amount that we should be receiving.
Right. And everyone who knows you knows that you're always championing the cause of this, this hometown, your other towns within your district, especially education, how central that is to you, so thank you for continued efforts on that, and obviously, anything we can do to help is what we want. So thank you again for being here, and congratulations again.
Are there any further questions for the senator?
Mr. President, I, I just have one other thing, Mr. President. I, I just wanted to highlight, one, one thing in the budget that, that I wanted to bring to your attention, because it's near and dear to my heart, and I'm sure it will be to you once I explain this. Every year in the budget, we have to fight for pediatric palliative care, which means end-of-life services for kids. And every year, we have to go back to the drawing board, and we have to put money in the budget and fight for those funds. And every year, we have a waiting list of over one hundred kids to receive end-of-life services. Now, you can't even imagine, you know, being a parent or even an aunt, uncle, or grandparent, you can't even imagine having a child in that position, where you need services from the state to prepare for the inevitable, preparing the siblings, their parents, and the child for what is gonna be coming next. So every year, we have a waiting list of over one hundred kids to receive these services, and a lot of these kids don't have time to wait on a waiting list. So I have made this my mission every single year to clear the waiting list, have no waiting list for end-of-life services for kids. And this year, we were able to get two-point-six million dollars in the budget, which cleared the waiting list. When I became a senator in two thousand and ten, that was at seven hundred thousand. But every year, we need help from people in our communities that don't know this line item even exists, because if you're not in this, in this kind of spot, you don't even know there is such a thing as services for kids in this, in this, this spot. So if there's one thing other than, you know, local earmarks and school funding that I need help with every year, and if the council can band together individually or as a body to advocate for that line item, that would be a big help to me every single year. Because every time we have to go back to the drawing board and fight for every single dollar for these services for these kids, it takes, it should be a no-brainer, really. It doesn't make any sense that we have to even fight for those dollars, but we do. And sometimes they're cut mid-year, and sometimes we're not able to put that money back in. And, and I get letters upon letters from families and children themselves and their siblings of these children who have passed away, you know, saying how important these, these services were to them, providing a safe place and something that they could lean on at the worst possible moment in their lives. So it would be helpful if I could get your help for that line item in this year's budget, because I fear once again, we're gonna have to fight for those dollars.
Council McLaughlin?
Mr. President, on that motion, what can we do, Senator? Send letters to your office? How, 'cause I wanna do it tomorrow, as all of my colleagues I know wanna do tomorrow morning, whatever needs to be done.
Yeah, letters, letters to the executive branch and letters to leadership in the house and senate.
So through your office and go directly to the executive branch?
You can do it, you can do it right to the executive branch, but CC me on the letter, so I can make sure we have that.
Great. I know that we will work collaboratively as a body starting tomorrow to create a, a letter and get that signed and sent to the executive board, executive office, and I know we will do it every year going forward, now that we are fully aware of it. And I know you, something else you've been finding we've talked about a lot, and it's really important to all of us. Thank you, Senator, for all your good work.
Thank you. Thank you.
A motion, excuse, customary thanks, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Senator, for coming up. Appreciate the information. Council McLaughlin, your pleasure.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I refer this back to sponsor, and thanks to Senator Deidre Medical for coming in.
Got a motion to refer item number twenty back to sponsor, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to suspend the rules, take item number 13.
And 15.
14 and 15.
Second.
Collectively, they're licensing, they've been here all night.
I know we are individually both different.
Saying 13, 14, 15, or?
13, 14, 15 collectively.
They have a motion to take items number 13, 14, and 15 collectively. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read the items.
Item number 13 is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president. It's a new petition for a second-class motor dealer license from Eastern Auto Sales at 1934 Revere Beach Parkway. Item number 14 is an ordinance offered by, I think it's an, yeah, ordinance offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president. New subsections be accepted regarding purchase of annual meter stickers. And item number 15 is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president, a petition for livery license from Rutherford, Inc. at 7A Buckham Street.
No, so addressing one at a time, obviously.
Yes, you, I'm.
On the fir, the first one, papers in order regarding the use car.
Yes, the committee met with me prior, and there are, the restrictions will be held, and I'll be reviewing the license.
We move for favorable action?
Counselor.
On the motion, this was in committee, and just to give everybody an update, that this person is buying the license, he's been running this place, but also now he's buying the license from another person, but unfortunately, he hasn't really been following the rules. So, so anyways, the papers are in order, but he, he hasn't been following the rules as far as keeping the right amount of vehicles there. So, I want the people to know that. I want all my colleagues to understand that.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to follow up on that, so, out of the committee, there really was no recommendation, because it was a two-to-two vote. The issue, as correctly stated by my colleague, is that the current owner, license holder, has, on, on occasion, exceeded the number of vehicles on the lot. We had the individual in the committee, we made it very clear that there is a certain number, I think they've only been running it for about six, seven months or so. They, we've made it very clear that eight is their limit, that they cannot have more than that on the lot, that the license can be pulled if it's issued. So, my recommendation is we give them the benefit of the doubt, we grant the license, and we have our clerk stay on top of it, and they've acknowledged that they understand that number. And if they violate it, you pull, you pull the license. So, they're on notice, they have been on notice, but we made it very clear in committee that if they exceed that number, it's going to get pulled. And in order to, you know, help business in the community, I think we should give them the license, and we'll just stay on top of them. And if there's even the slightest bit of issue, yank it, and then we're done. But I think we should give them the opportunity. Thank you, Mr. President.
Second motion. Counselor McKinnon?
Through you, Mr. President, to our clerk. In committee, you had mentioned a fining structure that was going to be in place.
There is a fine structure through the, so we have two fine structures. One is obviously the municipal one, 1-8.
Yeah.
That's 25 incremental. And then there are also license fines for motor dealers under mass general law, which I have used in the past very few times, but I have given dealers $300 fines right off the bat, where it's a minimum 100 up to three, up to 1,000. So, depending on the violation, I can use different law to write the ticket. So, I've used MGL, and I've used 1-8, our municipal code.
What we want to make sure of here is that they do not exceed the overparking, or they do not exceed the limit of their numbers that they have for cars on that lot, because they've been doing it right along the line. So, that's what we're trying to.
Yep. Just, just so you know, I, I'm trying to make it a habit of getting out of the office a little more. Sometimes it's not possible, but code enforcement has been helping me in, in the sense they've gone by and looked, they don't find anymore, but if they find something, they inform me. So, because I'm not able to be on the road every day, some lot of days I'm in the office writing laws or doing something for, for the council or for my position, so I'm not always on the road. But I've been trying to get out a little bit more in the summer months, while usually you're on break, I get out even more. I tend to take more time and, and drive around the city and make sure our dealers are in compliance. And over the weekends, I live in the city, so I drive by them. If I notice something, trust me, then your clerk will handle it.
I just, I, I want to have, I want that to come from you, reason being is because the petitioners are still here, and I thank them for being here tonight, and I thank them for their testimony earlier in committee, but I want them to know that we're taking this serious, and, and that's it. So.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Okay, your motion. So, favorable action with the stipulations. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion for favorable action with stipulations, and second it. Clerk will read the roll.
This is for item number 13. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePero?
Yes.
Counselor Haaland?
Yes.
Counselor Marchesi?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
That would be nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
The item has passed. Congratulations. Good luck.
You'll be able to pick up your license Wednesday.
Item 14.
They've all been read, so.
Take a motion on item 14?
Second.
Have a motion for favorable action, item number 14, favor, and the second.
Accept the committee report, place on file as well. Did we do that for all? Second.
Yes.
Motion to accept the committee reports, place on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read the roll.
Chairman on motion?
Counselor Haaland.
I don't think enough work has been done on this. I think it should be staying in committee for time, because there's, there's still a lot, a lot of questions that are going on about this. So, that's my say.
Item 14. No, we've read all three.
Committee report.
All right. Do I have a second? So, Counselor Haaland, your motion is to keep it, to keep it in committee?
I second that motion.
Yeah, I'm not going to go anywhere, but that would be my motion.
Second the motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right. So, we have two motions on the floor, one to keep it in committee, the other one's favorable action. We'll take the vote for the, for committee first. Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Second. Clerk will read the roll on item 14. Actually, David, the motion is to send it to committee.
Keep it, keep it.
Keep it in committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 14 will stay in committee.
Thank you.
Clerk will read number 15, please. Actually, motion on, accept the motion on item number 15. Second motion.
Second motion.
One moment, please.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Like a motion on item number 15, please?
Favorable action.
Second. Okay, we have a motion for favorable action on item number 15, it's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePero?
Yes.
Counselor Haaland?
Yes.
Counselor Marchesi?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. President. You have passed.
You have passed item number 15.
Congratulations. Your license will be ready anytime Wednesday afternoon or later.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, can we make a motion to take item number 12 off the calendar, please?
Uh, second.
That was 15.
Aye. Clerk will read item number 4.
This is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president, an appropriation to transfer $500,000 from the General Stabilization Fund into the school department budget per the request of the school department.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have two questions. I was hoping to see the mayor, the mayor in the audience. I don't know if he's here in the building, if we could see if he's here. Because at committee, he was, he's here? Well, Eric, we can invite up Eric Demus.
Have a motion to bring up the city CFO, Mr. Demus. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Good evening. Eric Demus, CFO.
Mr. Demus, good evening.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
I'm going to ask two questions that I asked in committee, and I was hoping to get the mayor or somebody from the school department's understanding on, on them. One is that we received a letter from the superintendent stating that he nor the school committee had requested the $500,000, and there was no official vote of the school committee for the $500,000. So, there was a misunderstanding of where the $500,000 came from. I don't think you're the right guy to answer it. If you have some, like to share on it, I'd appreciate it. But where did it originate from? Where, where's the original order coming from for the $500,000?
The mayor, with other members of his administration, including myself, have had numerous meetings with the superintendent and his staff since this process has started. And even though the city council had appropriated a few meetings back, $5 million to get them through the remainder of the year, there was a gap between what the school committee had said that they needed and what was actually appropriated. So, we've been meeting with the school department for the past couple of months to, number one, address again the original appropriation, address what they're doing right now in areas of improvement, as well as moving into the fiscal 19 budget. At one of those meetings, the mayor was there, the superintendent was there, Mr. Obramsky was there. We were talking about this fiscal year and what the school department was going to need to get through the remainder of the year, to avoid layoffs, to provide all of the services that the students of Everett had expected, as well as, you know, no furloughs for any of the unions. The school department, Mr. Obramsky at that time stated that through some of the cost-saving measures that they did, they took a look at some existing contracts, they requested, and if, they said if they got an additional $500,000, that would get them through the remainder of the year. So, whether there was supposed to be a formal request, I'm not really sure. Certainly at that time, the mayor said, okay, we certainly want to make sure that we provide all the services to the kids and move on, and move on to the fiscal 19 budget, and said, we'll put, I'll put that order before city council.
No, and it's a noble idea, and I believe the council supports it. It's just a matter of where did it originate, because the letter from the superintendent said that it didn't come from his, from the administration, school administration.
I read the letter.
And, and we talked about it in length at, at committee. That was my confusion. So, it did originate from the school department in a meeting of administrators for the $500,000, which would bring them up to level to be able to continue with the services that are better provided.
I, I certainly, in my discussions with Mr. Obramsky, Mr. Obramsky clearly said, you know, that the $500,000 is what they would need to get through the remainder of the year, as we were talking about some of their accounting issues, as well as, you know, mass general laws, can we use money for certain things, making sure that everything that we're doing was appropriate. It certainly, that's the number that the school committee, I misspoke, not the school committee, the school administration said that they needed to get through the remainder of the year.
Okay, no, and that's fine. And I thought, I thought that, but then the, the letter came from the superintendent, and what, which is what made it confusing. My second question, and I don't believe you'll have an answer for it this evening, and that's okay, which is, could you produce for us at budget season, out-of-state expenditures, which is one of the line items we talked great detail about at committee, what the school administration has used for out-of-state expenses, traveling and so forth, just for one, the past fiscal year. I'd like to see what the school administration has used for out-of-state expenditure and what the mayor's administration has used for out-of-state expenditures. So, maybe his office or the upper, you know, upper entourage of the administration compared to the school departments. If you could produce those for us during budget season, I would greatly appreciate seeing a comparison. Only reason I ask for the top layer of the mayor's administration is because we're asking for the top layer of the school administration. If you could compare, which I believe would be apples to apples, for the budget season, I would greatly appreciate seeing that reflection, so that we can look at it with an open, clear mind for the coming fiscal year. If that is possible, I would appreciate the, the efforts on, on that.
I will be happy to make every effort to pull that information together to provide to the council. I will tell you, on the city side, it will be a little bit easier, as, as we've discussed through some of our phone conversations.
Absolutely.
We certainly can gather that information for the school department, but the school department's budget is more program-driven, so it will be much more time-consuming to dig down into their account levels.
But they might be able to help also by just asking the question, they might be able to produce or give us some information of what they've done for out-of-state expenses.
Absolutely.
So, if we could see the comparison of those two, I'd greatly appreciate, or as close to, as close to completion as we can get, I would greatly appreciate that information. Thank you, Mr. Demus.
Counselor Capone, questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Demus. I'm not as concerned about the genesis of where the number came from. I think that we all agree that there are some vital services that we don't want to see fall by the wayside, and we want to make sure that no one's going to lose their job. So, I'm happy if $500,000 is going to do it. My question to you, as our CFO, what does that mean to the city's financial health? Can we afford to do the $500,000? Where does that put us? Does that, I, I did see some of the meeting. I don't want you to rehash the meeting, I, I took the time to look at it, but I just want to know, from your point of view, because you're the one overseeing the funds, A, can the city afford it? B, what does it mean?
A, the city can't afford it in the sense that there's still about $3.5 million less than free cash. There's approximately about $1.6, $1.9 million in the general stabilization itself. So, from a, can we afford it? The answer would be yes. As I stated way back, even with the $5 million, I certainly have a concern anytime we are going to be using any stabilization funds to fund operations. It's certainly not a good indicator, it's not a good ratio from a bond rating agency standpoint. Certainly, we'll do everything we can to mitigate that, and, and, you know, there are very, a lot of very positive things that are going to happen between now and after the close of the results. But, again, just from a practical standpoint, I, I do not like using it or recommending it unless they were one-time purchases to use stabilization money that we set aside to fund ongoing operations.
Okay.
I certainly have made it very clear that I, we have to, as a city, together, determine how to best address this moving forward, and do it as part of the budget process, determining what our needs are, so that the city council and the mayor have all their options as far as how they're going to fund the city and the schools combined. It's certainly, you know, I, I would not want this to happen again next year.
Okay.
That would not be possible.
And I'm happy to hear that, because your answer is consistent with what it was last time, which was my concern last time, and is my concern, my concern is consistent. So, we're consistent. That's good. The fact that the funds are available, great. We can maintain the services, make sure there's no layoffs, but I do share the concern that, you know, this is, unfortunately, the situation is what it is. The formula that came into the state is not helping the matter, but at the end of the day, we want to be able to address these things on an annual basis in, in the budget, and hopefully, we'll have a better handle on it going forward next year, because none of us want to have a midterm issue like this again. So, thank you very much for the input. I appreciate it. I have no other questions.
Counselor McKinnon, questions for?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to invite a guest through you. I want to thank you for testifying the other night at Ways and Means Committee with the mayor on a number of issues that we brought up at the committee investigation. It was over an hour and a half, I believe, maybe two hours that night, so I, I would think that everything would pretty much be answered by now. So, also, there was an issue with the 121A that we had mentioned, I believe it was?
Yes.
And that's going to be coming in to a positive manner?
Uh, yes. It's something you'd like me to comment on right now?
Uh, no, you don't have to comment on it now. I just wanted to, you know, I wanted you to state that it would be happening, and as you did that night, as well as the mayor did that night. So, that was a good thing, that was a plus. There's going to be that coming into play, as well as the additional schools and stuff coming off at the end of this year, correct? That will actually, they'll be coming off of.
You're talking about debt-related?
Yes.
Some of the school issues? Yes, every year, we're, we're paying off more and more debt.
Okay. So, with that being said, we should be in somewhat of a unique situation financially for a city, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor Marchesi, questions?
Um, this executive is coming out of, out of the committee with favorable action?
Yes.
So, weren't these addressed at the meeting?
Yes.
And you determined favorable action?
It was two hours.
Yeah, so why don't we just call for a vote on this? I move for favorable action.
Excuse our guest, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you for appearing.
I have a, since?
Again.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Favorable action?
We have a motion for favorable action, second. Clerk will read the roll.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePero?
Yes.
Counselor Haaland?
Yes.
Counselor Marchesi?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Be nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've passed the order. Clerk will reserve, back to the regular order of business.
What number? What number, Jay?
Four and 19.
And 19 collectively?
We have a motion to take items number four and 19 collectively. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read the items.
Item number four is an order offered by Counselor Peter A. Napolitano as president to make available $250,000 in the traffic signal upgrades FY18 account. That would include needs beyond what is currently allowed for. And item number 19 is, Mr. President, is a resolution by, offered by Counselor John Leo McKinnon to request planning and development to review the traffic flow of the light located at Broadway and Hosmer Streets from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the request of neighbors.
I have a motion. A motion for Mr. Monti to come before us.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Monti to come before us, been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Please have a seat, and state your name for the record.
Jay Monti, Department of Planning and Development.
So, we just had a motion to bring him up here. Does anyone have a question for Mr. Monti?
We have one.
On item number?
On item number four, Mr. Chairman, to make available $250,000. That's kind of an unusual order that we have. To make it available from where? Do we know where that's coming from?
If you could direct that to Mr. Monti.
So, this is money that was appropriated specifically to make traffic signal upgrades along, or throughout the city, really. And so, we actually received some grant money, some significant grant money, $400,000, that we're able to use to do a lot of that same work, and so we're essentially left with a surplus now. And so, this motion really is to allow us to use that money for other roadway safety needs. It could be, you know, crosswalks, it could be roadway barkings, you know, many things that we've talked about, and I think folks have asked for in the community, we have the opportunity to kind of accelerate those projects now, just by changing the definition of this funding pot.
But this money is in account already?
Yes.
Okay, and I think we should know what account it's in. Is the name of the account?
Um, I believe it's on there, isn't it? It's on the, no, no. Yeah.
Yeah, director runs attention, there is a document on your, on your tables, your
programs that would include the following. Any project identified in the city's Complete Streets Priority Plan, pavement markings, curb and sideways alterations that improve pedestrian safety, infrastructure related to maintaining and improving transit services, e.g., bus stops, pavement signs, signs, signals, et cetera, any physical roadway alterations that improve pedestrian and bicycle safety, including bike lanes, cycle tracks, bicycle parking, bike-sharing infrastructure. Thank you. Counsel Capone?
Actually, all due respect, there's actually someone?
But if I, on a point, I just moved the suspend rule 13.
Okay. A motion to suspend rule 13, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Counsel McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, quickly through you to Mr. Monti. Mr. Monti, do you guys, does the administration foresee spending this, some of or all of this money on the bus lane, bus-only lane out of Broadway? I know that the mayor has talked about going on the other side of Broadway, on the northbound side of Broadway.
Right. At the time, we have not made a decision to expand the bus lane any further. We may use this money for some pavement markings, and we may do so in a way that may allow us to make that decision at a later date, but we have no plans currently that we're going to expand the bus lane.
Thank you, thank you.
Saying, Mr. President, through you to our guest. Mr. Monti, it looks like the account was set up back in fiscal '17 to address the traffic signals along Broadway and Main Street. Has that been completed, or is there still work that has to be done?
So there's still some work that is ongoing. Most of it is completed. That's why I say, you know, the adjustment to this definition would still allow further signal work to happen, it's just that we don't anticipate using that full amount, and therefore?
Okay. So the additional funds, we got the $400,000 in, which is good. Are we, these items that you're looking at, one through five, in this communication from Mr. Souza, are these, are the lion's share of this on Broadway and Main Street, or are there other things?
No, this could be citywide. This is not meant to be Broadway-specific.
Top of your head, any specific areas that stand out as priorities?
Yeah, so I know we've had a lot of requests for things like raised crosswalks, the rapid flashing beacons, the AC on Broadway now, and also, you know, another priority is pavement markings, so we've started to add bike lanes in a couple of spots. We've had requests for others. So on there is also our Complete Streets Prioritization Plan, so in that plan, which I can have it forward to you guys, is a list of priority safety projects, and we'll most likely, you know, be drawing from those first.
Okay. In specific areas, without the report from me, specific areas that you think need to be addressed sooner than later?
Are you saying neighborhoods, or?
Yeah, general neighborhoods.
We would like to do some work on Main Street, you know, improving some of the crosswalks and some of the, you know, signals there do need more work. You know, there are, again, neighborhood requests up, Vernal Street, there was a request for a raised crosswalk. Another down by the Adams School, so there's, you know, things like that that we'll be looking to.
And those are necessary. It's been, it's been a topic of discussion for quite a while, so.
Sure.
And the funds are there, and it's been granted, so that's wonderful. Thank you very much. I appreciate the answers. I have no other questions, Mr. President.
Good evening. Thank you. Being patient, waiting to come up here. The new traffic, the crosswalks we have lit up now, is that, is that some of this money going towards that, or what you did already?
The ones that are on Broadway, the lights on the?
Yes, there's one there on.
Those came out of that $400,000.
The pool, the pool area, and, you know, D.C.R. Pool and up on Broadway also.
Yeah.
The flashing lights?
Yep, those mostly came out of the $400,000 that we got from the state.
Great, because I have a piece on tonight. I'm looking to spend a few bucks to our own other schools, but thank you.
Okay.
Favorable action? I didn't turn it off. I didn't turn it off. Okay, we have a motion, favorable action, it's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
On item number four, Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've passed item number four. Clerk will read item number 19.
We already read it, right. We took a collective.
I already read it, Mr. President.
Mr. President? Thank you. Through you, could we have the city clerk just read the item number 19?
Again? If you want to read it again, I already read it.
You already read?
Oh, that, um?
The response?
Response, you mean?
Yes.
Yes, I read that. This is a response from Mr. Jay Monti, from the transportation planner of the planning department. At the request of the city council and the area residents, the traffic light timing at the intersection of Broadway and Hosmer Street was reviewed and subsequently adjusted to reduce the delay for motorists exiting Hosmer Street during peak hours. The maximum wait time that a motorist should experience at Hosmer Street has been reduced from 85 seconds to 70 seconds. This was the maximum adjustment possible without creating backups along Broadway and/or affecting the coordination with other traffic lights on the corridor. Traffic flow at this intersection will continue to be monitored should any additional adjustments be required.
Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. President, to our invited guests. Thank you, Mr. Monti, for doing that. I hope that the people up there see some relief from it, and I'm sure I'll be hearing if they don't, and then you'll be hearing again if they do not. So I'm going to refer this back to sponsor.
Second.
Excuse the customary thanks.
Thank you for coming up, Mr. Monti.
Thank you.
Have a motion to refer item number 19 back to sponsor, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Counsel, send it back to sponsor.
Um, can, actually, can we take item number 25 off the calendar, please?
Second.
We have a motion to take item number 25 off the agenda. It's been seconded. All in favor?
No.
Opposed?
Item number 25, Mr. President, is an order offered by Counsel Anthony, the counselors, Anthony DePiero, John Hanlon, Michael Marquez, Wayne Matuski, Richard Delasola Jr., Michael McLaughlin, Rosa DeFlorio, Stephen Simonelli, John Leo McKinnon, and President Peter Napolitano to amend Chapter 2-3A of the City of Everchata by special act, the state legislature.
Favorable action on the order, send in it to Senators?
First of all, I do not consider this a routine piece. I have talked to a few other people, a few other items outside of here. I would actually entertain a motion to either hold this over for two weeks or to send it to committee. There's a few questions regarding the city charter, and I think we have some legal questions that need to be addressed.
I thought the only way we could do that, Mr. President, is a money order, I thought, was deemed routine or not, is financial matters.
It's financial stuff. If you're deeming it routine, it means, it means a financial order. I mean, you can refer it to a committee, Mr. President, but it's not deemed routine or not.
Counsel Capone?
On the motion, Mr. President, I don't know if this will satisfy your concern. You see, my name is not on this piece, and the reason being is I think it needs to be looked at a little bit more clearly. I know that the language that came along with it, it's right now in the charter, it's a one-year window from separation of service, and we're looking for 30 days. I think that's a little quick. There's a reason why it's there. The other thing that I point to the attention of the body is we're addressing one part of the charter, Chapter 2-3, which only affects the city council. There is a similar provision for the mayor, there's a similar provision for the school committee, and it looks like we're self-serving if we're only addressing one thing. My recommendation is that we refer this to the Legislative Affairs Committee, we invite a city solicitor, and let's hash this out a little bit more, find out, A, legally, what the right process is, B, if we want to just keep it as the legislative branch, or do we want to open this to all three bodies mentioned in the charter, and C, if 30 days is sufficient time, or if we need to increase that. So that would be my motion.
I made a motion that we favorable actioned previously. That was on the floor.
And there's a motion also to send it to committee.
But my motion?
He was motion made and seconded.
I mean, if it does also?
And there's been a second motion to refer it to committee, has it been a second? Okay, it's been seconded. So the motion to go to committee, you know, takes precedence. Right, takes precedence over favorable action. If it fails, then the second motion is voted on. So right now, the motion is, Counsel DePiero?
Thank you. I know our city clerk actually did some research already. Could you elaborate, Mr. Canelio?
So I know briefly, I've discussed this. Obviously, I don't write most of this stuff. This comes from our legal department. Ms. Mejia or outside counsel write a lot of the legislation when it comes to something that, with a special act. We've seen in similar communities, some communities do have the one year, some have none, and some have 30 days. So this was discussed briefly. If it was legal, we feel that it was also, this goes to the state legislature. This vote tonight is not making it binding. You send it to the legislature, the legislature does also their own investigation to make sure. They would never do anything without checking legal counsel and making sure that it's something that not only the municipality wants, but it's legal on their end. So this would be something, if you passed it tonight, would be referred directly to the state senator, Mr. DiDomenico, and he would bring it to the floor, to his membership, and then it would either pass or fail through the state senate and the House of Representatives. If it comes back to us, it requires a two-thirds vote for enactment, and the mayor still has to sign it also. So just so you know the process.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
I hope that was clarifying enough.
I think this, this rule is a broken rule. I think when something's broken, you should fix it. We saw that when there was a vacancy on another board, and a member who lost reelection to this board wasn't able to go for that seat. I was raised that when something's broken, you fix it. I spoke to the senator right before this meeting started. I forgot he was going to be here. I asked him his opinion. He said, send it right on up. If they can't do it, they can't do it. But he said, send it on up, and that's what I'm going to do. Thank you.
Any other, any further speakers? Okay, so the first motion is to send this to Legislative Affairs Committee, it's been seconded. All in favor?
No.
I didn't ask if it was opposed. I asked, all in favor? Show your hands. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion has failed. Second motion is for favorable action.
And on that motion, Mr. President?
Counsel Capone?
Thank you very much. I'll be voting no for the reasons I stated. It lists one item out of the charter when three different groups are addressed, so it looks like it's self-serving for this body. I think 30 days is too short, and, you know, maybe one year is too long, but the reality is, this was a charter that was voted by the people of the city, and they voted for a one-year period. And for us to usurp our ability and send it to the state house and undermine that, I think is wrong. So I will be voting no.
Counsel DeFlorio?
This is just for, it's not just for the counselors.
Actually, it is.
This amendment is.
It's just for the counselors?
Because, yep, you chose, we chose one section.
One section first, so then we'll go on to the next.
We've only done one.
Okay. If there are people on a board, for example, okay, on a board, whether it's the library, whether it's the, it doesn't, this doesn't affect it, is that correct? Because that's the next thing we should be doing. People are on a board making no money, okay? Making, giving all their life, giving 10 years, 15 years, making $700 a year, and if they're qualified for a job, they can't apply for it? That's ridiculous. So there's a lot of things that have to be changed, but let's do one thing at a time.
I believe the, if I could, I believe the item refers to elected officials, and in this particular item, it refers to strictly the city council. Okay? Okay.
Do you have favorable action?
So we have a, we have a motion for favorable action, it's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
Counsel Capone?
No.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marquez?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
And President Napolitano?
No.
One, two, three, four. Seven ayes, two nays, Mr. President.
That is passed.
Can we suspend the rules and take item 24, please?
When it comes back.
Second. Suspend the rules, take item 24, it's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Would you like me to revert back?
Clerk will revert to the regular order of business. Again?
Item number three is an order offered by Counsel Peter A. Napolitano as president to transfer $600,000 from the assessors' overlay surplus account into assessors' professional services account for payment of legal expenses, appraisals, and contractual services.
Counsel Capone?
Can we please have Mr. Demus before us? If the poor gentleman is still here?
We have to suspend rule 13.
Yeah, we can. Can we suspend rule 13?
No, motion to suspend rule 13, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. I do consider this routine. We've, we do this pretty much the time of year, every year, it seems.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. I think, I'm taxing my memory, but I think it wasn't that long ago we had another piece on, same thing, I think it was $400,000.
That's correct.
I think you got me a breakdown, that was my inquiry, you got that to me timely. I appreciate that. Off the top of your head, do you know what the breakdown of the 600 is for this? Between those functions? Best guess, if not?
My best guess would be about two-thirds would be legal-related. The reason why I don't have a better guess is because I'm waiting for some requests for consulting in the area of valuations, and I don't know where those are going to
One, two, three, four. Seven yeas, two nays, Mr. President.
Then it was passed.
Can we suspend the rules and take item twenty-four, please?
When it comes back.
Second. Suspend the rules, take item twenty-four. It's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read the roll.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
The item.
What's the resolution?
What was item number three?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, sorry. Item number twenty-four, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Michael J. McGlaughlin, excuse me, Michael, requesting the City of Everett join a joint lawsuit with low-income communities regarding Chapter Seventy funding.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, hearing the comments of Senator DiDomenico this evening, although I believe that this has some merit to it, and I believe that we should look at this possibly down the road, I wouldn't want to jeopardize any ongoing or future conversations with the administration and the governor, and I believe under the leadership of the soon-to-be School Finance Committee, I wouldn't want to interrupt any of their work. I'm gonna send this back to sponsor this evening for those reasons.
Second.
And in the future, possibly, we will look at this again as a, as a measure to take further action. I know there are other communities that are debating this right now amongst themselves, whether or not they should join the lawsuit or not, but I think that we are in a great spot with the senator's leadership and your leadership to not have, to not hurt any potential effects of the school funding, which is the permanent solution for all of us. So I'll refer this back to sponsor.
Second. Gave a motion to refer us back to sponsor. It's second. All in favor? Uh, yeah. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Would you like me to revert back?
Clerk will revert to the regular order of business. Again?
Item number three is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president to transfer six hundred thousand dollars from the assessors' overlay surplus account into assessors' professional services account for payment of legal expenses, appraisals, and contractual services.
Councilor Capone.
Can we please have Mr. Demus before us? If the poor gentleman is still here? Yeah, we can. Can we suspend Rule Thirteen?
A motion to suspend Rule Thirteen. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. I do consider this routine. We've, we do this pretty much the time of year, every year, it seems.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Capone.
Through you to our guest. I think, I'm taxing my memory, but I think it wasn't that long ago we had another piece on, same thing. I think it was four hundred thousand dollars.
That's correct.
I think you got me a breakdown. That was my inquiry. You got that to me timely. I appreciate that. Off the top of your head, do you know what the breakdown of the six hundred is for this, between those functions? Best guess. If not, it's okay.
My best guess would be about two-thirds would be legal-related. The reason why I don't have a better guess is because I'm waiting for some requests for consulting in the area of valuations.
Okay.
And I don't know where those are gonna come in yet.
Now, is this in anticipation of ATB cases, or?
Part of this is, yes, ATB cases as well. We have one very large ATB case that District Gas has filed against with us as well.
And what's currently in the assessors' overlay surplus account?
Right now, approximately six point six million.
And what do you anticipate the need for the rest of the fiscal year in that account?
We don't anticipate.
Okay, so this is clearly surplus.
It is surplus, and the reason why this number is a little bit larger in the, the action that the Board of Assessors took, we didn't think on the last one we were gonna have to be coming back. We don't want to have to come back.
Sure.
Before. So we're hoping that we don't even need half of this, but.
Okay. Just for the record, I am totally fine with you coming up piecemeal as opposed to big numbers one at a time, so I'm good with this. So again, thank you very much for answering the questions, and when we get to a place where it's a little bit more tangible, if you could please provide me with an update on where those funds go, similar to what you did with the four hundred, I would greatly appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have no other questions.
Councilor Marchese.
Mr. Demus, real quick. As part of this money, part of our lawsuit, you filed a lawsuit against Exelon?
Yes. The, this appropriation also will be covering legal fees for all of our assessing-related items, which would be the Exelon matter as well.
All right, thank you.
Second motion.
Demus, thank you.
Motion for favorable action, second. Excuse customary, thanks.
Thank you.
We have a call. Six, seven. Okay. And do we have a vote for monetary? One moment. We're just waiting for two, so we have enough to make this kind of vote. That's why you want me to keep the mic on. Tell the truth.
Thank you.
Keeps telling me to turn it off. It never goes on the first time.
Seeing that we don't have.
They're coming. So the public understands this type of a vote for transfer requires a certain number of councilmen, two-thirds vote.
In our, in our charter.
And we need eight members, and right now, we only have nine members. Thank you. Hope you washed your hands. Long as you washed your hands. Don't shake that man's hand. All right, the motion is for favorable action. Okay, clerk will read the roll.
On item number three, Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Delasola.
Yes.
Councilor DePero.
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Councilor Marchese.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon.
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, Mr. President. You have passed the order.
Okay. Clerk will read item number nine.
Item number nine is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president, an order by the city council that the City of Everett, by and through its mayor and city council, to petition the general court to authorize an amendment to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Fifty-four, Section Sixteen-A, by allowing the city clerk of Everett to add a, to the, excuse me, allow the City of Everett to add a fifth member of the Elections Commission, who shall be the city clerk, or his designee, the assistant city clerk.
Favorable action?
Second.
Councilor McGlaughlin on the motion.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just wanted to state that this was, this is again another item that we're sending to the state legislature to make an amendment or change to our charter. Unfortunately, the, or fortunately, these things sometimes come in individual item, as pieces. We're gonna hopefully look at all of our charter in the future and look at how we can better serve this community and what changes we can make favorably or unfavorably, but this is just another one of those items that will go to the state legislature for favorable action from our, excuse me, from our charter. I just wanted to explain that this was previously what we did. We're doing here again this evening on another item. Thank you.
Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm nothing if not consistent. So the reality with this, I look at this, and in no disrespect to our current clerk, he is a very hard worker. He's got a ton of duties. I don't want to see him put any more duties on than he already has. There was a lot of debate over this piece way back when, and as a matter of fact, I voted against it. I didn't want Election Commission. I wanted to keep it in the clerk's office. And there was a lot of debate that it should be removed out of the clerk's office because it was too much work. And now here we are, putting it back into the clerk's office, so to speak. So I'm just a little confused about that. What, what I would prefer to do is send it to Legislative Affairs, get a little more understanding on what exactly the purpose is, and if, if our clerk is here, he could answer if he feels that he would be overtaxed, because, you know, earlier this evening, he's got a thousand things on his plate, and now we're adding one more. So, and I know that it was stated earlier by one of my colleagues that we're just sending it to the legislature. And I think that one of the things that we have to understand is, before we send something from this body, we should do as much work on it as we can. We shouldn't just kick the can down the street. Oh, someone else is gonna do it. We just talked about our city charter, and, you know, maybe the legislature will determine we can do it, we can't do it. But the reality is, we should be doing this stuff in-house as much as possible, and then once we get to a final resolution, then move it out. But, you know, I see it on the calendar. I haven't had a chance to really investigate exactly why, but I'm more than happy to hear from our clerk if you want to allow him to elaborate.
Mr. Clerk.
I can elaborate quite a bit on this one, actually. So if you, if you would, this is not an amendment to our charter. This is a special act run by our mayor and through the legislature to change Chapter Fifty-one, Sixteen-A, which is what created the Election Commission and withdrew the registrar of office. After speaking with outside counsel, KP Law specifically, who is our outside counsel, they felt that the charter, with my name still being in the charter, with specific things to do relating to elections, I needed to be more involved, or somewhat involved. This, to me, is the most satisfactory way I can do it immediately, without overtaxing myself, because now I'll be one of five members of a board. There'll still be an executive director, and there'll be two employees in the office. Before, when it was in the city clerk's office, it was the city clerk's sole responsibility, and that is the difference here. I don't feel that I, I mean, obviously, it is an increase in duties. I'm gonna have to work more, but that's fine. I, I still take all the ballots back to my office. I have the only safe that they can use. Everything is still in my possession, and I don't feel very comfortable doing so without having some responsibility. And that's my, that was my issue. Then, once I spoke with outside counsel at the last Clerks Conference, she agreed with me, that there, there should be something. And instead of changing a bunch of pieces of our charter, she said this would be satisfactory and the most quick and efficient way to do so, until we came up with a better resolution. But in the meantime, I did make sure that the mayor was on board also with adding another member. I didn't want to do this without his, with his somewhat blessing, but so he understood what was going on and why we felt it was necessary. But I did make sure outside counsel was addressed this. They wrote the piece for us, and I believe it's the right move going forward, though I don't necessarily want to take on a lot more. I do, I do still help them often, and it's just now I'm gonna be a voting member and, and I'll be taking the minutes.
And that, hearing that, that makes sense to me, that there's still some overlap with the office, even though the separate commission's been established. So I'm glad to hear that, and I'm glad outside counsel has weighed in on it.
I would do it.
Through, through you to our clerk. Have we gotten an opinion from our city solicitor?
Yep, she was with me. I, just so you know, I, I don't reach out to outside counsel because they cost money, unless I check with our city solicitor, because she pays the bills. So her and I sat down first.
Is she here?
Then I, yes, she is here. And then she, she's been working on this with me and mostly with our outside counsel and KP Law, so you gotta.
I did not see Ms. Mejia in the audience. The poor thing has been here so long. Thank you very much for the explanation. Mr. President, with your indulgence, I'd like to ask our city solicitor to come before us.
Motion, I bring the city solicitor before us. Do I have a second?
Oh, my God, overwhelming.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Good evening, Ms. Mejia. Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest, Ms. Mejia. Thank you very much for being patient, being here all night long. On this particular piece with regards to adding the city clerk or his or her designee onto the Elections Commission, do you have a legal opinion on that, one way or the other, in terms of?
Actually, the clerk and I had been communicating with outside counsel, who's an expert on, on these types of issues, and, you know, she was the one who guided us through this piece, so.
Okay. And as the city's counsel, it's, it's your opinion that since there is apparently some overlap between the city clerk's office and the Elections Commission, it's probably beneficial to have them on there as a member?
It's definitely benefits, and it would, it would serve the, the best interest of the city to have.
Okay. And then this is a very minor issue, but something to think about down the road, and I'm sure our city clerk's not even thinking about it because he's more than happy to do whatever he needs to do. I don't know if there's a complication with regards to compensation on this body, if there needs to be any kind of special legislation with special police statutes.
We can clear, we can clear that with state ethics.
Okay.
And, you know.
And I know that's not the clerk's concern.
Yeah.
So I just raise it as one of the other issues in the middle of the.
Yeah, we can definitely clear that with state ethics.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions. Thank you very much.
Councilman Hanlon.
Pretty much just going on down there. And I also want to point out that, you know, he said it's responsibility. It's not a responsibility. He needs the authority. He has to guard and maintain all of this business that's down locked up in his, in his safe. They have, they don't even have a lock drawer in the, in the Elections Commission's office, so it has to be down there. Or you buy them a new building, or you could buy something for somebody. So this is the most, I guess, the most economical way to, to do this, so that we would have them down here. He stores everything down, and on election night, you've been there at election night. I mean, all the work is carried out in the, in the clerk's office, and it will still be that way, you know? So you just can't have someone that has no authority to do that. He has to have the authority. So that's all I'm saying, that it's a, really, it's a must to get this done. We'll have troubles with the election in the future if that's what happens. So I'm in favor.
Thank you for considering. Actually, Councilor McGlaughlin, do you have questions for the city solicitor? Excuse customary, thanks. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to restate what I, what I thought was going on here, which was that there was language still in the charter that cleared the city clerk to have involvement in elections in our city. So to be able to fix the charter that states that this was the easiest way to be able to do it. If I was misunderstood, I wanted to just clarify, or I thought I was correct, it just states that he is still involved in some aspects of the election with our charter. So this just fixes that problem that stated in our charter. Is that correct, Mr. President, or Mr. Clerk's correct?
That is. I think he was asking a question, sorry.
Yes.
This doesn't change the charter at all.
No.
No, it just helps clarify.
It satisfies the charter. It's how the outside counsel stated it.
Okay.
Councilor Capone.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. So on, on the matter, now, understanding with the, the response from the clerk, I thank him, and getting the opinion from our city solicitor, I'm prepared to vote in favor of it. But the only thing that I do want to point out is that this is not a statement against anyone on the Elections Commission. They're doing a wonderful job. It's simply the overlap of the clerk's office with that function, and based on that, I will be voting in favor.
Just, just real quick, sorry, just so you know, we could have just added me to it with the four members, but we didn't want to kick people off, so. It was not because of them. It was, it was, this is the best way to satisfy and not get rid of anyone.
We have a motion for favorable action. It's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
On item number nine, Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Delasola.
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Councilor DePero.
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Councilor Marchese.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays. Sorry, I missed it. Item number ten is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president to amend the Everett, the City of Everett administrative code.
Favorable action on the order.
Before we make a motion on this, I've been instructed by the city solicitor, this item has not been appetized the way it needs to be. It can't be, it can't go to committee, and it can't be amended by this body. What I'm asking is, is a motion to postpone this till our next meeting.
Second the motion.
So moved.
It's moved, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Clerk will read item number eleven.
Item number eleven is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano, a communication in order to approve the statement of intent to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the work to be completed at Everett High School, one hundred Elm Street, from the school committee.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, I had a great opportunity to talk with Mr. Shar this past week regarding this. This is a long process that needs to be started now. This, this does nothing else other than send it to the state for review, and this is not something that will happen in the near future, but something that should happen in the near future. I ask for favorable action from my colleagues so that the, we can get the ball started on this.
Call for the question.
We got a motion for, what are we voting on here? All right, let's, let's have some decorum, please. Okay.
I said call for the question.
You need to do it correctly, because I have to sign off on this to send it to the state along with the, the rest of the administration.
We have a motion for favorable action. It's been seconded. Clerk will read the roll.
Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Delasola.
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Councilor DePero.
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Councilor Marchese.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon. Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
And President Napolitano.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays. You have passed the order.
Passed the item. Clerk will read item number sixteen.
Item number sixteen, Mr. President, is an order offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano as president. It's the National Grid requesting permission to do work on McKinley Street. National Grid to install one SO poll on McKinley Street. National Grid to install one SO poll, owned guy stub poll, number two zero five six dash one, and anchor guy poll.
We need to report. Councilor DePero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real briefly, the committee report was to keep this in committee. National Grid was gonna come back with a better design that wasn't as ugly or a tripping hazard in a month. So the motion I'm gonna make is to accept the committee report and grant further time.
Favorable action on the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to grant further time to accept the committee report and place on file. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number seventeen.
Councilor, Mr. President, on sixteen.
Seventeen.
Mr. President, can we take item number twenty-two off the calendar, please?
No, we have a motion. One second. Let the clerk catch up.
Was it seventeen?
Seventeen.
That we honor the, Mr. President, this is a resolution offered by Councilor John Leo McKinnon that we honor the wishes of the family of Mr. Ali, the owner of Angelina Subs, to have a dedicated square at the corner of Broadway and Parker Street in honor of him and his family's service to the City of Everett, the city and citizens of Everett for decades according to his religion. I believe this needs to be done forty days after his passing, and that, that date should be on or around the fourteenth of February, and that a signed designation also be considered for this display.
Councilor McKinnon.
Thank you. Mr. President, through you to our city clerk. Mr. Clerk, do you have any information on this?
No.
Yep. Through you, Mr. President, to the clerk. Do you have any information on this?
I have very little, but I do know that I have spoke with the administration briefly, especially Mr. O'Donnell, the chief of staff. And tomorrow, I'll be having a meeting on a few other pieces, and I will bring this to his attention, but he already is aware of it. They are working on it. I just believe they were deciding on what the best suit was, if it was a sign, a bench, or so forth. So they haven't, that I know of made a final decision, but they are working on it, and I have discussed, and I will discuss it again with them tomorrow morning.
So hold it, lay it on the table for next meeting, or?
That should be a.
Postpone till next meeting?
That's what you like to do?
Do we have a motion?
I do now, because John said it's okay.
Wait a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Councilor McGlaughlin, you had made, mentioned before we took this piece that there was an item you want to take, or do you want to continue in the order? Okay, clerk will read item number twenty-one.
Twenty, we did.
Twenty-one. No, we did not.
Twenty-one, we did.
We still have twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three left, and then we're done.
Item number twenty-one, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by councilor, councilors Anthony DePero and John Leo McKinnon to discuss new badges for the auxiliary police force and funds appropriated last year for auxiliary expenses at the Government Operations Public Safety and Public Service Meeting on three, twenty-nine, eighteen.
Refer to the said committee.
Have a motion to send it to committee. It's been seconded. Councilor McGlaughlin on the motion.
Mr. President, I'd just like to ask the sponsors of the item if I could amend this by adding my name on this as it's, okay. That answers that question. Next.
So moved.
No.
I would also request the sponsors, as a former auxiliary police officer, I would ask if they could add me on to this piece.
So moved.
Thank you.
So moved.
Is that okay?
Moved to add the entire city council?
We have a motion to add the entire city council to this piece. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We have a motion to send this to Public Safety. In, Safety, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number twenty-two.
Item number twenty-two, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Michael K. Marchese in support of the city's consideration of mandating that all wheelchairs, electric scooters, and bicycles have a three-foot flag somewhere on the scooter, wheelchair, and/or bicycle to prevent accidents at crosswalks where they otherwise cannot be seen by oncoming vehicles while heading out into the street.
Councilor Marchese.
This is a resolution that I probably did three years ago, and it kind of went in circles and didn't get anywhere, but the person that asked me was kind of adamant about putting it back on, and I really don't know where to send it, because obviously, if there's gonna be some kind of flags put on something, there's gonna be an expense. going to be some kind of flags put on something, there's going to be an expense. I don't know if it goes to public safety, the fire department. I wouldn't know where to send it. The police department, I know they do helmets and things down there, so I, does anybody have a suggestion? Public safety's not going to get anywhere.
Public safety and public service will be able to do it.
Just refer this to public service, public safety.
Counsel Hanlon on the motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you know, I was talking to Councilman Marquez also about this, and I had someone in the public actually ask me about three weeks ago, I still have his letter, about when are we going to do this? And the problem with this is that we had made it a resolution last year, we made it a resolution this year. I think should we make it an ordinance? I mean, we should make it a, an ordinance. Make it an ordinance, you know? Now, I can work on it, and anybody can work on it, but we should make this as an ordinance so that it gets some more action instead of a resolution that gets thrown in someone's desk and they don't pay any attention to it.
Would be a fine if someone didn't have one.
I don't know if we want to go, well, maybe a small one, but, you know, because we're going to hurt other people. But it's something that we probably should, you know? Put this, you said go into a committee with item 21. We should put this in a committee so we can talk about it a little bit more, because that fine would certainly be something to think about, you know? And, but it's important, you know, and we see lots of people that are on scooters now, you know, those three-wheel, four-wheel scooters. They go zipping across the street like anybody else. You can't see them because they're sitting down, you know? That flag waved, at least it would be something, you know?
I think the law of natural selection addresses that.
Yeah.
Counsel Capone, do you have something to add to this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the sponsor. I know that this is a piece that you had on three years ago, and it's got merit. It's all about public safety. I'm trying to tax my memory. I think our city solicitor said that it may have been a constitutional issue. But with that said, it's got merit, and I would recommend that it go to committee as the council suggested. Go in resolution form, invite the city solicitor to the meeting, and see if it's something that we can enforce, and if so, we can always make it an ordinance at that point in time. And I don't know if the, yeah, I don't know if the issue was that, or if it was a financial burden, but if it turns out it's a financial burden, the city could always consider supplying them if it was warranted as that much of a safety issue. But one of the other issues we have, one of the things listed on here is the bicycles. I've been railing on that one for years, that people who operate their bicycles don't understand they need to operate with the rules of the road. People flying down sidewalks, elderly are going to get hurt. Everyone will get hurt. Someone's coming down on a bike, they'll knock any of us over. You need to operate your bike, your scooter, whatever the item is, with the rules of the road. So we really need to underscore the policy that we need to educate people how to use their bikes. So I would suggest that when it goes to committee, we invite the city solicitor as well.
Second on that one.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just was going to echo the same comments that Counsel Capone just stated. So I, I'll say, thank you.
All right. So we have a motion to send this to Public Safety Committee as a resolution to invite the city solicitor. And I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk will read item number 23.
Item number 23, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola, Jr., to review safety issues around the Kavarian School, and that the DPW install a crosswalk at the corner of Cherry Street and Woodlawn at the request of parents and principal of Kavarian School.
Counsel Delasola.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, I met with Mr. Norman, the principal of the Kavarian, a few parents, and some teachers. There's two or three issues over there. Some sends to Public Safety, invite Jay Monte, Mr. Obramsky, and Greg St. Louis also.
Do I have a second?
And that'll be it. There's two or three issues, crosswalks. I'll just, I'll deal with it at the Public Safety Committee.
We have a motion to send this to Public Safety, invite Jay Monte, the city engineer, and Mr. Obramsky.
Can I get Mr. Norman also to principal of the Kavarian? Thank you. Principal.
Charles Obramsky, Alex Norman.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. You sent this committee. Clerk will read item number 26.
The final, final piece, Mr. President, is item number 26, a resolution offered by Counselor Michael McLaughlin to invite Greg St. Louis and a representative from the community development to the next Public Safety and Public Service meeting on March 29th to talk about the construction going on at Centilli and Suites Circle and the construction equipment that is parked on the island at Main Street.
Counsel McLaughlin.
Mr. President, briefly on this, can I amend this to add Counsel Delasola on this? I don't know if you saw in front of 66th Main Street, the island that's on Main Street, the construction equipment that is there on the island has become a real nuisance to the neighborhood. There is a mud pit like you've never seen before on this island. The whole island has become this mud island. It's really been ripped up, and it's in poor condition. The residents down on 66th Main Street are concerned, the loud noise of the equipment that's going out there. This is night work that's happening. They're starting up excavators and other heavy equipment at nighttime, almost right in front of 66th Main Street, in front of the building there, because they're working on both Centilli Circle and Suites Circle. I'm sure we've all saw the work that's being done there, with no real identification of what they're actually doing there, but there's a lot of work going on there. But that island that separates, as you come up to the rotary, that island there is really a bad situation. If any of my colleagues want to join the efforts on this, I think we need to demand answers, and we need to get a game plan of how we're going to clean this up. It's not fair to the residents of 66th Main Street, and they spend a lot of money on their building throughout the year, especially with the spring coming. We don't want them spending a lot of money on their landscape, and right across the street from them have this unbelievable eyesore. If my colleagues all want to join this item, I think it's a very important item that we need to get answers immediately, not later, but immediately.
They're making phone calls, so.
So I would amend this by adding the whole city council. If my colleagues are in favor.
So you have a motion to amend this to include the entire city council. Second, all in favor?
Yeah, aye.
Opposed?
And I make a motion that we refer this to Public Safety, Public Service, and if any of my colleagues want to attend that meeting to discuss this, but if you haven't seen it, you really have to go down and see what's going on down there.
Sponsors are always invited to the, so if we're all sponsors, then we'll all be invited. We have a motion to send this to Public Safety. Counsel, I don't have a second yet.
Second.
Mr. President, on the motion, I want to know how these committee meetings are going to work. Now, I went to a committee meeting for an hour and a half on Ways and Means. I had questions. I'm not on that committee, okay? And I wasn't able to ask questions. Now, I didn't ask them on the floor tonight because I got my answers, but if I'm going to spend time to go to a committee that I'm not on a committee and not be able to ask questions, then we're doing all this work two and three times. I don't mind being here until 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, even 2 o'clock, if we accomplish something. But I'm not here for the cameras, okay? I want end results. So I want to understand, once and for all, tonight, when we go to these committee meetings, if I'm not on the committee, if I'm able to ask questions, because if I'm not able to ask questions, I'm not sending nothing to committee anymore.
I can, I can clear some of that up, if you would allow me. If you are a sponsor on a piece of business at a committee, you're able to speak. As a general member showing up, you're not able to speak.
So I'm not able to ask questions?
That's distinguished. No, no, but if you're, but in this particular case, I'm just going to give you an example.
Right.
In this case, because it's a piece with all the members, then yes, all members would be allowed to speak.
Okay.
The only potential conflict is by having 11 of us there at a committee meeting, we now constitute a quorum and can officially vote, and that's a conflict. Correct?
You are correct. As long as you are not in here, all of you at the same time, no more than five of you, and the rest of you in the back, one at a time, can sit here, not make decisions, and ask questions. That is allowed for informational purposes. The meeting was legally posted, but the committee has the priority, the president, and then a, one member at a time. As long as there's no quorum here voting and discussing things, the rest of you are in there, one at a time, come up, I don't see an issue with that.
Well, this is what I'm saying. I don't want to be in here, okay? If I'm not on the committee, I'll be outside. I'll put my hand up. I want to be invited up to ask the questions. Why is that, I don't see that as being a conflict.
Not for my knowledge.
And if it is, okay, if I'm not understanding something, then from now on, I'm not sending stuff to committee, because I'm allowed to ask questions, just like every other council on this board, okay?
I want a ruling from John Burley, please, on that.
I just want you to know, I was here an hour and a half the other night. You were here.
Oh, I know.
Yeah. Opened up to the public.
Wait a minute. That's not what he said the other night. He said, no, 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 no.
I was there, I was there all by myself. I kept going like this, and I was, they wouldn't let me.
I want you to clear that up. John.
So, yeah, I was basically correct, as he said. It's just that you could speak, but we, you'd be worried about open, the open violation of the open meeting law, and you could do it, but you'd have to all vote to allow someone to speak. But then anyone from the public could speak. And then the other problem is, we didn't post it as that, as a public, as a open meeting, as a public hearing.
See, I sat out there for an hour and a half because I wanted everybody to ask the questions. And then if there was a question that wasn't answered, I wanted to ask it. So I thought I had the fore.
That's, that's, I'm just trying to get an answer from Johnny.
Basically, that's the reason for the whole committee structure, is so the committee does the work. Each one of you on respective committees. So, I mean, if you're all going to show up at a meeting, then why have a committee structure?
Right.
Just do it right here.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, that's your decision and stuff. But you have appointed committee members that are supposed to do the work in the committee.
Sometimes a question leads to a question.
And we put back. So that's up to you, how you want to do it.
So, but we would, I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
No, what I'm saying, I'm sorry, okay? I mean, I haven't spoken all night. I think I'm entitled to speak.
No one's, no one's...
You go.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, listen, I have five sons at home, and I'm not, I'm not afraid to bring a baseball bat in here, so watch out.
I think I know where you're going, but the, the thing is, if you have certain questions, you can relay those questions.
Yes.
Or, as you did tonight, you could add yourself as a sponsor, and as the city clerk stated, one at a time, as long as you don't go over five members, it doesn't constitute a quorum of the whole party.
What I'm trying to say is, I sat there for an hour and a half, okay? I waited for all the members to ask all the questions. Now, sometimes a member will ask a question, which I would ask, or anybody would ask, and based on the answer, you might come up with another question where the member doesn't pick it up, okay? So basically, at that point, I only had one simple question, because my questions were answered.
And that's understandable. In a situation like that, what you may want to do is see if you could try to get one of the members' attention and stuff, and ask that question if you...
Because I don't want to come to a regular meeting, ask the question, open up the thing all over again, and then the 600 other questions, and we're here for another three hours. I mean, we're either going to accomplish something, or just sit here and keep asking questions. I don't care. I can stay here till the next budget's here, and don't bother me. As long as you order food, I have coffee, I'm all set.
Will you yield now, lady?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you for yielding, Mama Rosa, to our clerk of committees. I called her up that night, and I was asking the questions. I didn't know if, in fact, we could have brought her up into the forum that we were in. And I know there was an issue in Lowell that was a bad situation.
You have to be very careful when you do that, because there are other people in the audience.
That will...
Once you start doing that, then the public has the right to speak, because now you've opened, you have to open it to everybody to speak.
Absolutely.
And once you do that, you also have to be careful, because now the people that are home watching, saying, I didn't realize this was a public hearing.
I wanted to come up.
I didn't get the opportunity to speak or know about this. I would have liked to have...
The proper way to do this right now, John, is to get the questions and answers from the committee men and women that are sitting here.
Yes.
And actually have them ask that question. That's the proper way to do it in a committee forum.
It's the proper way to do it. Otherwise, you do it at your regular meeting like you do right now.
Absolutely. So we don't want to break the open meeting rule law here, and we do not want to, you know, destroy our committee structure, I don't think. So I think what we need to look at is, we, I know the number of committee members went down, and there was a reason for that, and I believe it was from the Lowell documentation that came out of that.
Right.
So what did we go, we went from, how many members to?
Five.
We went from four. We went from five to four?
Because the issue is, when you had the five members, once you invited a sponsor, who wasn't a member, now you have six members.
Now you got a problem.
Now you have a quorum. So that was the issue.
Absolutely. And that would have did what they were doing up at Lowell. Okay.
Right.
All right. So I would, I think that we proceeded the right way the other night, and I would hope that we continue to proceed the right way throughout our committee structure, and not to destroy the committee structure, but if we have a mechanism in play to where we can actually say, there's a councilwoman or a councilman out there, can we get one of the members to go and see? We could do that, so they can cross over the bat. Okay. All right. That's fair enough.
I will...
Thank you.
I will tell you from the chair, if I'm sitting in a committee as an ex officio, and a member comes in who's not on the committee who has some questions, I'd be more than happy to step out of the zone to give that, that member an opportunity to ask their questions. You know, sometimes it's not the questions you ask when you're here in a meeting, it's what you think about after the fact.
Yeah.
And now you have to, now you have to find another resource to be able to present it. So I'll be honest with you, Counsel DeFlorio, I was at that meeting the entire time. I had no idea. Actually, I was kind of surprised when you showed up, and if I thought you had some questions, we would have made some concessions for that. No, you're mad at McKinnon. I understand that. No, kidding.
I'm not blaming anybody. I just want to clarify it.
If you would, I have two members.
I love a block, I love a dollar.
Counsel Capone.
President, I understand the council, my colleagues frustration. I think that the chairman of the committee can open it up, as was stated, but then everybody has free rein. And to kind of offset the concern about the public notice, perhaps going forward when we schedule a committee meeting, we probably should say all members of the public invited, and then that way, we might be able to cover it. We might have to check with the city solicitor to see, but that may cover it.
Check with the agent.
And that we can do it. But the bigger question, the bigger problem we have, is that with the structure of four, there are many issues that come before this council where we all have significant interest in it. And unless we do a committee of the whole, it's going to end up at a committee, it's going to get debated for a long time, it's going to come back on the floor, we're going to debate it again. So, you know, it may, it may get to the point where we're going to end up going to a working session, where we end up disbanding the committees, unless there are specific committees for sub-issues, but we may end up doing a thing where we alternate. We have a council meeting one week, the next week we have, we have a full working session, and that way, everyone has the opportunity to be here, everyone can ask their questions, and go from there. But that's where we might end up going. I don't know. But it's a question that comes up over and over again. So at some point, we may have to address that. But at that, we will mercilessly end the night, I think.
Counsel Hanlon.
We have to send this, excuse me.
Counsel Hanlon has the floor next.
I just need to ask John a question, all right? John?
If we, if we, just talk through the mic, John. Counsel, I just finished with the
neighbors. The people at home want to hear you.
Okay. That Leo is a sponsor, but he's not on the committee.
Right.
And we say, and we, I'm sorry, and we say, refer this to the committee and invite the sponsor.
Right, yes.
Now, we don't want the sponsor on the committee, but we want him sitting in the audience.
Right.
Can we call him up as a, to give testimony?
Absolutely.
That's what we do.
Absolutely.
And not on the committee.
Yes, absolutely.[1712.44]
Right, the sponsor can come and speak.
Some of the sponsors that we see, they just don't show up.
Yeah.
Can we vote on the motion, guys?
If they're not, if they're not a sponsor of the piece of business, unless you open it up to the public, and then you get it to the situation, and, yeah.
All right, if I could make, if I could make a suggestion on this item, please. It's getting late, okay? If I want to make a suggestion, because we still haven't voted on item 26, what I would suggest, that you reiterate your feelings on this particular issue, not the, not the item, but regarding committee structure. Refer it to, talk to the members of the Legislative Affairs Committee, because they are in the process of reviewing and overhauling our rules. And if our rules, if this is something that we can, we can adjust in our rules, that's the place. Right now, I have a motion to send item number 26 to, to Public Safety and Public Service. Second. Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
The ayes have it. Got a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Good night.